Clock has hit six o'clock, so let's get this party started. We are going to start with an invocation. Kathleen, who do we have tonight?
We have the Lord's Lord.
All right, Dottie, could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before your throne. We ask you to oversee this meeting tonight, that you would, Father, cause wisdom to be upon our leaders, that, Lord, you would direct their steps, direct their words, Father God, that we might see, Father, good outcomes of the things that are brought before us tonight. We thank you for the blood of the Lamb, Father, that you have shed for us, and we just ask you to oversee our city and bring us into the right relationship with you that we all should have, and we just thank you tonight in Jesus' name.
All right. Thank you. Please stand for the flag salute and remove your covers if you have them.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a quick roll call. Victoria?
Here.
Joel. Eric.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Kathleen.
Here.
Seth.
Here.
Rob.
Indra.
Here.
All right, we've got a full house tonight, so let's get started. First, on the council agenda is a resolution adopting addressing homeless grant. And I'll hand it over to you, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Stephanie Nell, City Attorney, back here before you about the Addressing Homelessness Grant Program. We've, you've probably had a lot to read since our meeting yesterday in the workshop. Hopefully, we can get through anything else that we need to discuss today and move forward with whatever council wishes to do. So, just going back, we're all familiar with the subject. Grant program that would offer funding for capital expenses to address the needs of the homeless population within the city, and the relationship supports the council's goal of housing and homelessness. So, we've gone over this a number of times along this topic, so I'm going to jump forward. At yesterday's meeting, council approved canceling the previous grant program. And a number of the change, one thing I want to discuss is that that cancellation is pursuant to O R S two seven nine B point one zero zero, which provides that any solicitation or procurement described in a solicitation may be canceled, or any or all bids or proposals may be rejected in whole or in part when the cancellation or rejection is in the best interest of the city as determined by the city. So, that's what the council did yesterday. It was determined that it was in the city's best interest to cancel the grant program. And a number of the changes that we're going to talk about tonight are related to issues or lacks that were in one or more of the previous submittals. The proposals, most of the proposals had deficiencies, and many of those were reflected in the scoring. But given that proposals we received were deficient in many ways, it's clear that applicants did not understand some of the requirements, had not established partnerships, or the ability to provide services, and there were significant questions regarding whether more than one proposal could actually be permitted or allowed under the appropriate code regulations. It's been asked why it's in the city's best interest to cancel the first program and establish a new one rather than proceeding with the next highest-scoring application. And the answer to that is, among other things, that the remaining applicant did not have partnerships established, and there were concerns about code compliance, and it appeared that could not successfully complete the project. So, they were not recommended. I'm not going to address all of the deficiencies in all of the applications. I just wanted you to know that there were deficiencies that would have caused problems for all applications. And that's why the new R F P is necessary, to ensure that the proposals are meeting the city's needs. The revised program would address many of those deficiencies from the first set of proposals. It would provide the transparency that council and the public has asked for, and it would ensure that the review is only based on appropriate factors. So, all of the prior applicants would be welcome to submit new or updated proposals that meet the requirements of the revised program. We wouldn't be limiting it to only looking at certain applicants. It would be any applicant, whether they've applied or not, would be allowed to apply Just so we're clear, on the basis for that grant cancellation, it's in the best interest of the city to clarify minimum requirements and expectations. We obviously had deficiencies there. To obtain more detailed information regarding proposals, and in particular, to ensure code compliance, to provide that transparency to the proposal evaluation process, and to prevent applicant submission of additional information and lobbying outside of the established process. And I want to address, to the timeline questions that have come up, about whether or not this is going to significantly expand our timelines. If we had made revisions to the existing program, we still would have had to provide at least a couple of weeks for applicants to provide additional information. So, this doesn't really provide an additional timeline beyond that. It would be, it's just a matter of a couple of weeks longer than it would have been had we revised the original program, because we still would have had to get the additional information, engage in the scoring and review process, engage in contract negotiations before it came back to council. So, it's not a matter of a couple of months of extension, it's a matter of a couple of I also want to address the question about fairness, and whether or not this process is, is fair to cancel rather than revise. And the concern that we have on that is, if we simply move forward and revise the program as substantially as we're talking about, that would be seen as unfair, because it would be creating a new process as well as new requirements and new criteria for evaluation that previous applicants who had already been rejected didn't have the ability to respond to. So, by doing it as a new process rather than revising the old one, we're treating everyone fairly and allowing everyone the same opportunity to respond to the same grant proposal. So, with that, I will move on to our document review, and you all received the commented copy before. We're going to start in Section Three, and the reason for that is because the only changes up above that are to the timeline, and we'll talk about timeline at the end of the presentation. So, the first change is to remove the ability to consider higher amounts in its discretion and just have a hard line number. We previously set that at one point two million dollars. If you wanted to change that, we could, but it would be to have a hard line only. And, Mr. Mayor, since we've already gone through all of these before, do we want to just go item by item for discussion?
So, what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to present everything as changed. I would like council to pay attention and write their questions down, and then we can go back through it.
All right. The next change is to insert a provision that would state, that proposals would be open for public inspection once they were distributed to council. Oregon State statute allow, says that we may keep that information confidential during the period where the review and the intent to award, or up to the point of intent to award, it does not say that we have to. So, I think putting applicants on notice that we're not going to, so that council as a whole would be able to review and evaluate those proposals would be appropriate. Under project requirements, this is more of a clarification, and just so council's aware, as I was going through things today, I did find a couple of other pieces that the draft you have doesn't have. I don't think it's a substantive change, but I did highlight any changes that I made since sending you the draft. It was pointed out that we had a sentence that didn't actually conclude, it was only half of a sentence. So, we would, previously, we had it that we scored higher if they offered programming. Based on discussions and feedback we got, we determined that it was probably more appropriate to have that as a must. So, instead of saying you get more points if you provide it or facilitate that, it requires that either the shelter itself provide it or facilitates the provision of optional programming. One suggested change that came, and I forgot to type it in here, but I meant to, would be to add that substance treatment as a separate programming piece in there, just to identify that that's not always the same thing as addiction recovery. So, we would put that piece in. The next piece on there would be to require that if an applicant doesn't already have possession and control of a prop, of the location at the time of the application, they would have to include signed documentation from the landowner that the property would be transferred, including the terms of the transfer, and if we aren't able to keep that confidential, acknowledging that it would be made public as part of the application materials. I'm still working on whether or not we can keep that confidential. I think we probably can, but I'm going to verify that before we would finalize this The next change is under the disqualifying factors section, and it would add three new explicit disqualifiers that we would want to consider. Failure to meet program requirements. So, if they don't meet our minimum requirements that are outlined in Section Three D, such as one hundred and fifty capacity, six-month timeframe, provision of, or facilitation of services, they, they would be disqualified based on that. The next one is an unacceptable location, and that's a location where a project cannot be cited, given applicable code requirements. That would be a disqualifier. And just so we're clear on that, that is, unacceptable location means under code, and whether or not the project could actually be done. It doesn't mean socially or politically unacceptable, because those are two different things. The other added disqualifier would be improper communication, and that would say that applicants that engage in improper communication with the decision-maker or staff would be disqualified. It would define it as attempts to influence review of proposals in any way, or as otherwise described in a later section, and we'll get into some of those details. But essentially, it would prohibit lobbying and additional information outside of the established process, because the established process would be how all information should come in to council. The next change is to consolidate and explicitly state that we can, in fact, cancel, delay, or reject proposals. It's just a, it's a statutory provision to make sure that we include. The next few changes are just housekeeping, references, dates, updates, things like that. Down in Section Four D, under applicant cover sheet, we would be requiring an oath that all representations are true and correct. It was suggested, after review today, that we include that that is related to application materials, any information provided to council during the interview process, or any other public information that's made public regarding the project. So, make sure that all information about this proposal is true and correct. It would also require an acknowledgement that all application materials would become public upon submission. So, they would have to sign off that they understood those things. We changed some points structure, and I'll get into that in a little bit, but the big changes that we made to the narrative questions were regarding the location, which the section's now renamed site. So, that is E two. And one of the things that we found when, looking at the proposals and with all the information and discussions that have happened, is that we needed more information about the sites, we needed to verify and make sure that they were compliant with code, there were a lot of concerns about that, there's probably, a number of them actually wouldn't have been approvable under existing code. So, we want to make sure that they're meeting all of the requirements before they actually submit their application, as opposed to trying to piece that together afterward. The change to paragraph, to item A would require that documentation that we talked about relating to possession and control. A new narrative question would require the applicant to provide a description of the preliminary site plan and attach a visual representation addressing areas for housing units, communal areas, access points, amenities, parking, ADA measures, all the things that they're going to have on their site. We want a description as well as a visual. The visual, they could submit up to three pages in addition to the narrative, so it wouldn't count towards their page limits for the narrative questions. The next narrative question would be to identify and describe the approvals, permits, and variances required, the process that they would use to obtain those, and explain how their project satisfies applicable codes, such as the Development Code, Fire Code, Transitional Housing Code. One of the things that I heard about, actually, this evening, is that there is a pre-application process where the city can, in fact, review proposals and make a, provide information and feedback on those. They think they could probably expedite that process to a couple of weeks, so there is, it is possible to get that done in the timeframe and get it back and have that information for purposes of the applications. So, that might be something we can either recommend or even potentially require that that process be followed. The next piece is just moved from a different section. It requires, it's about the timeline, and we want to make sure that they're including when they think they can get necessary approvals, when they would begin accepting individuals onto the premises, and when they would be at full occupancy, or at least full capacity. We hope they never get to full occupancy. The next narrative question is a consolidation. There was an impact section where all of the questions in there seemed like they could be consolidated into other questions, and so in order to make sure that we had our focus on the right pieces, this is a consolidation. It asks the applicant to describe how the shelter site takes into consideration the need for reasonable separation from socially sensitive areas, and how they will work with the community surrounding the project location to minimize the adverse community impacts. And those are the significant changes that were made to the narrative section, and those, I think, address many of the concerns and questions that have come up over the past few weeks regarding the proposals. That would then remove that impact section. Another consolidation is in the budget section. It basically takes the clearly linked activities separate question and puts it into the line item question and just says, tell us how much, what it is, and how that links to your activities for your project. So, we were seeing in applications that we were seeing the same information twice, so we want to make sure that that's just consolidated. The next new requirement in Section Four I is references. We want applicants to identify three references that can provide information about the applicant's success in providing services to homeless individuals, and ideally, those references would include at least one local government entity and at least one partner service provider. I think that that would help give council the ability to get feedback out. I think that that would help give council the ability to get feedback outside of just the applicant's statement of what they can do. Moving down to Section 5, this is the process. This is how the selection and award would be made. There are some pretty significant revisions here. The first one is that the city council would become the review panel, which would make it a public discussion. We would have a public workshop where those, the scoring and the interviews would take place. There is a provision in here reminding the applicants that information provided outside of that process would not be accepted, distributed, or considered and may be deemed improper communication. This is how the scoring breaks out. Many of the points were moved to this location section, and it's actually retitled sites. Let me fix that while I'm thinking about it. To make the, the site and the code compliance as equal to the activities and operations. So both of those would be worth 30 points, almost a third of the total. And then project need, the output, the budget memorandum of understanding, letter of experience would be the remaining 40 points. So now we'll get into some of the new processes that needed to be spelled out. The first is that we would have a proposal opening and review period. Once the proposals are submitted, they would be due at 4:00 PM. At 4:00 PM, they would be opened and distributed, they would be scanned and distributed to the city council, mayor, and relevant city staff. City staff would review and comment regarding location and project compliance with the relevant code. There would be no guarantee from staff that a project would actually be approved, just identification that there might be concerns about code compliance or if it would look like it actually could not be approved. Staff would also contact all applicant references and provide a summary of those comments to council for its initial review. And then the council members would complete the initial scoring during the proposal review period and come in to the meeting with your initial scores. During that meeting, the applicants would each have an interview time. They'd be able to come in. There would be standardized questions that they'd be asked, but you could also ask follow-up and clarification questions. And then after the interviews, then you would be able to discuss the proposals, update your scoring sheets with your final score for each applicant. And then the highest average final score that beats all program requirements would move forward. At council's discretion, they might be given the opportunity to revise proposals or provide supplemental information. This provision, we put in there because of the way that the, the process played out most recently. But I also received some concerns that this is how we got to needing an RFP, a new RFP also. So maybe we want to take that part out and just focus on get the information in the application, get the information during the interview, and make the decision based on the information provided. So I'll be looking for some feedback on that hopefully as we go forward. We have the contract preparation period where the draft grant agreement would be discussed, prepared, and worked with the, the applicant that was selected to move forward. This is the section that was referenced above, the applicant contact. It says that potential, potential applicants prior to the proposal deadline and/or applicants that have submitted proposals prior to issuance of a notice of intent to award should not contact the mayor, city council members, or city staff regarding their proposal except to submit questions or protest regarding the solicitation to the city recorder or to respond to direct communications from or engage in contact, contract discussions with the city attorney. Those are the legitimate purposes for engaging about the proposals. We had, I have language in there currently that says all other communications may be deemed improper and may result in disqualification of the applicant. One suggestion that I received earlier today was that that should be changed to all communication must go through the city attorney or city recorder, and anything else will be deemed improper. Just to make sure that there's, that there's not wiggle room on that. It's, you either go through those two individuals that are designated, or it's improper. Makes it a bright line rule. So we can talk about that one hopefully when we get to questions. Then we have the proposed grant agreement would be presented to the city council at a council meeting, and hopefully we would move forward. So that is the end of the actual program itself. The attachments that you have, I've made the changes to the applicant cover page that would include that oath as well as acknowledgement of the public nature of the documents once they are opened. I'm, I think I've updated all of the narrative questions, but I'll probably have to go back and make sure that they're consistent with whatever's actually in the grant program before this would be issued. There were no changes to the MOU or the letter of experience or the risk assessment. And then with the scoring sheets, the changes that were made here is the first page has to do with the disqualifiers so that we have checkboxes, and when we come in for scoring, if someone feels that an application should be disqualified for any reason, we can talk about that upfront and have that discussion. And then the narrative, I updated the points values and the rubrics for those based on the information or based on the prompts. So those have all been updated now if there's any questions about those. And with that, that is all of the changes unless there's something someone wants to talk about specifically.
So I'll bring it back to council if you have any specific questions, and we got Rob and then Kathleen.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. So I probably should have brought this up when you first started speaking, but my understanding and as my memory is that by resolution, council approved writing the RFP initially. We couldn't have canceled that RFP in a workshop yesterday. So to me, that's actually the still resolution that we're working on. You said in the beginning, that was canceled yesterday. I don't believe that can happen legally. So what are we going to do about that?
We can get a, do a resolution as quickly as possible and get that before council. That was council's decision and vote yesterday. We can follow that up.
I understand.
We can follow that up with a resolution to confirm that that is council's decision.
That, that's obvious, right?
All right, I got Kathleen in the rig. Kathleen?
I'm not seeing on the scoring sheet the disqualifying page.
It would be page... 35 or G1.
My G1 says narrative and project need.
Then I must have put that in after I sent that out. I thought I had saved that before sending it to you.
Maybe I'm in the wrong packet.
Okay, Rick?
Thank you. So under page 6, 3E, disqualifying factors, do we have the ability to be aware and use discretion if the organization has lawsuits? For instance, not if they spilled a cup of coffee, but maybe something else that we would want to be aware of that when evaluating them?
I don't know that I would include that in disqualifying factors. If that's something that you want to address as part of a background check type process, we could look into that. I don't know that I recommend it necessarily, but it is an option to ask for disclosure of those things, and we can look into those. That, that might be where reference checks comes in as well.
Okay, I would be in favor of that. I'd like to hear with the rest of council later on. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Indra?
So Stephanie, I'm a little confused about, you've mentioned there were problems in the applications or issues. What is the difference between a problem that causes a disqualification versus something you're missing, but it's not necessarily a disqualification? Who determines that? That's really not clear to me.
In the new program?
No, in the old one, in the one we're working off currently.
The, the scoring showed significant deficiencies. All of the discussions about the grant program addressed deficiencies. It's...
So which deficiencies are disqualifiers? Meaning you don't qualify at all versus you need a little tweak or we need to talk about something?
So requirements are requirements. They shouldn't be discretionary. If you don't meet requirements, you don't meet requirements. From there, it, if the project's just not feasible, it should be a disqualifier, if it's just not going to work. Other disqualifiers would be missing components, the unallowable costs and the things that are identified in the grant program.
Which brings me to my next question, which is the difference, you use deficient versus not qualified. How are you using those two terms?
Did I use not qualified? It's...
Or disqualifiers versus deficiencies?
They're, to some extent, they're related. You can be deficient and not meet all of the things without actually being disqualified. For instance, the way that the original grant was written, it was that we want you to provide services, but it wasn't necessarily a, it wasn't clear that it was a requirement. And so there were significant points deductions if you didn't, but it wasn't really a disqualifier in and of itself. Things like not meeting capacity because they were a requirement were considered disqualifiers.
And is that specifically clear in the RFP?
In the new, new one, yes.
In the old one?
In the old one, requirement is requirement. If you can't meet requirements, you shouldn't proceed.
Okay, so is it okay, I mean, someone else can ask a question. I just, I have a few more going along with this. So when you presented at the last meeting, I believe, that only, I think you said only, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I think you said only one is qualified. You said one was not qualified. One, one, we didn't even look at. One was not qualified, and one you brought forth. So that the other one, you never really said they were not qualified, or did you? Did I miss that?
I did tonight.
But did you last time?
I did not, because we weren't considering anything related to that application at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Kathleen, Rob, and then Victoria. Kathleen?
Stephanie, can you believe we clarify what you meant by recovery versus addiction recovery?
They're interrelated, so it's, it would be putting in here substance abuse treatment and addiction recovery. Those aren't always the exact same thing. There, there's some overlap, but recovery can be a different thing than treatment. So we want to make sure that it's clear that we are looking for both.
Rob?
On page 14, it had references and, including a local government entity as a reference. Can you define local?
A local government entity would be things like a city, a county, a special district, things like that.
It's not necessarily local to here.
No.
So it should just say a government entity.
Well, government entity would include like state and federal. So local government entity is a universal term that means the smaller government bodies.
Maybe, maybe you understand that, but I don't believe there's anybody else in the room that understood that. To me, local would mean Grants Pass area. So if someone were to come from Montana, it'd be hard pressed to provide a local reference. If I, if you understand my point to confusion.
We can clarify that if council wishes.
Well, I, I would certainly hope that council would want to define that more clearly.
I got Victoria, and then Indra. Victoria?
Yes, could you go to the language that was changed on ADA accessibility? And I believe that is page 5, I think. But then we changed something, I thought, but then I don't see it here. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. I wanted to make sure that it did not say that it, how, how are we talking about ADA accessibility?
They would have to demonstrate that they comply.
Oh, just, oh, yeah, so is it the highlighted that you have there? No, just above it?
The ADA accessibility is the language from before.
It's the same as before?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So it's not, it hasn't changed to, okay.
Nope.
Thank you. And then the other question that I had, and I think you did discuss this, but I just want to be clear on this, about land acquisition and how, if there was any more thought as to keeping location. Can we keep location until something is granted? Maybe we can't, but we, we talked about that yesterday.
I'm still working on it.
Okay.
Given the timelines of today, didn't have an opportunity to get an answer before today's meeting. That answer would, we would have that answer before this was released, and the, it would reflect if we, that we would keep it confidential if we were able to do so.
Okay, just until it was awarded or, or however we decide we're going to come up with that.
If we're allowed to do that under the law, we would keep the location information confidential.
Okay, until, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Indra?
Yeah, I don't want to harp on this, but I just want to understand how, when we, you talked before, you pointed out that one of the applicants was unqualified. And then you were, we were going forward with another, and the other, nothing was said. So nothing was said until concerns started coming up and issues, and now you're telling us tonight that they're not qualified. And so I guess I'd like to know, did the majority, when the scoring was done, or the majority, was it clear in that scoring meeting that that applicant was also not qualified? Or was that not even discussed?
The concerns that I raised, that I mentioned here tonight, were discussed during that review meeting. That, that there were those significant concerns. We didn't think that the code compliance was there, and there were no partnerships.
So concerns were discussed, but was it discussed that they were not qualified?
We didn't have to get to that point about qualification because we already had someone that had scored higher that, that was going to be recommended.
Any further questions from council? Rob?
So I want to make this really clear for the public because the interaction between Victoria and the attorney, I think, may have left the wrong impression. The words that you used, the, the location information will remain confidential. So confidential until when? Please explain that.
If we can, it would be until the notice of intent to award. And that, and it would be limited to the exact parcel information. We would acknowledge that a confirmation of intent to transfer had been received for the property, but the actual site itself, the property piece, would not be identified until absolutely necessary, if, if we can do that.
So it would be disclosed, no, later, it would be disclosed before a public meeting that the council was going to vote on this. In other words, the public would know before council votes what the location is.
It, it would be included, just like before, it would be included in the council packet relating to the contract to be approved because it would be part of the attachment to the contract.
Thank you.
I got Eric, and then Indra and Victoria?
Since we're talking about the properties, I was wondering if you could explain to the public the idiosyncrasies in terms of buying and selling property and the importance of being, remaining anonymous for bids and stuff like that.
It's just, it, there's concerns about somebody swooping in and taking property out from under a buyer. There's concerns about, especially with something this politically sensitive, about backlash against the property owner that wants to sell property as a result of being willing to provide property for such a project. So there, there's a number of concerns and reasons why we would want to keep that confidential.
And when we talk about buying property at the city council, we have to go to executive session, meaning the public can't?
We do. Yep, for contract, or for negotiations and information about property sales, we do that in executive session.
Thank you.
I got Indra and then Victoria. Indra?
So you spoke about... So you spoke about fairness at the very beginning. Two of our counselors have seen the original applications and the scoring, and I don't think that's fair to the rest of the counselors going into a new. So I would like to know if all of the counselors can see the original applications and the scoring.
Until an intent, notice of intent to award is issued or a contract is awarded, they're considered non-public information. That's, that would not be typical, and assuming that we go forward with a new RFP to make sure that we're getting all the information that we need, there would be no need to see those. The, the reason, you would want to make your decision based on the information that you're provided with the new criteria that meets, better meets the city's needs.
And I understand that. Nothing about this seems typical, honestly.
It's getting that way.
Yeah, and so I see what you're saying, and in the world where we did it right the first time and it wasn't scandalous, it would be fine. And we do want to go in open-minded and objective, but, but now you have two counselors and possibly more that maybe were taught to, that, that know more than the rest. And I don't see how that is fair.
You shouldn't be basing any future decision on information that we're stopping a process on. You should be basing it on the new information that's received. So it would, to some extent, potentially taint the process if you saw those old applications, because it might affect how you viewed the future applications. So yes, there are two counselors that have seen those because they were part of the review panel. Hopefully, they can set that aside and evaluate the new proposals objectively.
I got Victoria?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that the reason for, that I brought up the land was because in the last process, there, there was significant intimidation that happened early on. And I don't want to see that to any, from any applicant or any, any person who's applying or any person who's considering selling land. It's not, it's definitely something that I would not want to keep from the public. In fact, I said yesterday, of course, it's important that the public know where this would eventually be located, but to protect everyone until that, until it needed to be based on the law, if we can, I thought it would be an important thing to do. So that is why, that is why I thought that was important. I just wanted to point that out.
And I can put these words in there too, at the end of that sentence, so that the documentation will be public as part of the application materials when required by law. So we can put that in there and cover whenever that would happen.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Seth?
Yeah, I know this kind of came up in the last round of this, and if we decide to reissue this, can we include a background check for at least the lead applicant, whoever's listed on the application? I know there's reference checks, but is that possible?
It's unusual, unheard of, and every entity that I've talked to that does grants like this says, why would you do that? And I talked to, I think, a half a dozen. However, what I did, if you'll notice from the application or the packet that went out last week, in the contract itself, we were requiring the provider to have background checks of all employees that provide actual direct services. That's where background checks usually come into play, is for those actual service providers themselves. So we can require the entity to make sure that those are happening to protect the vulnerable populations. But just doing a background check of an applicant or a lead person isn't really going to tell you whether or not those people are at risk, because it's the service providers that are going to be having the contacts.
Any further questions? Indra?
Would you say that this new RFP is, I mean, basically the same? There are changes, but mostly they're clarifying changes, in my opinion. What would you say to that?
There's procedural, significant procedural changes. We are completely overhauling the process by taking the evaluation out of the hands of a review panel and putting it in the hands of the council to do in public. The interviews would be a procedural change that would be very different from what we had before. There are those significant changes to the narrative relating to the citing, but, so we have site change, or narrative changes, we have procedural changes, and we have clarifications. And all of those basically turn this into a new proposal that the original applicants didn't have the opportunity to go through. They didn't have the opportunity to apply for or have the same process. If they had had interviews, maybe their, things would have been different as far as scoring. You never know. So having a new process rather than trying to make massive changes to the old one is the fair way to make sure that the city is getting the applications that it wants to see.
And what changed your mind? Because we discussed initially the council's scoring it, and you thought that was a really bad idea. And so what changed your mind on that?
I'm, I still don't think it's a great idea. But given the way that all of this has played out, the amount of information that's coming, the amount of feedback that's going to council, the amount of questions we had, the discussions about whether or not the, what was happening during the scoring were biased, all of those things, I don't necessarily like the idea, but I think in this particular case, it's probably necessary to make sure that council is getting what council wants.
Further questions? I've got Eric.
I've got a question in terms of the last qualified or unqualified, I should say, candidate that was left after everybody else that we keep talking about why they were disqualified. Well, was, was drug treatment an issue there because they didn't offer any kind of drug treatment or any kind of recovery? Was that part of it too?
I believe that they mentioned that they would provide services. They didn't really have a plan or partners to do that. And to be clear, they weren't technically disqualified. But what I'm saying is their project could not have gone forward. So it, if we had brought a contract before you, we would not have been able to say, I think you should approve this, because that project, we would have had to start over in several months as opposed to now.
So it's pretty clear?
From my perspective, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I got Indra?
Yeah, have you, in the, I'm not an expert on procurement process, but I have talked to some people, and, and not uncommon is a bidder's process. So when, when you get down to a couple that, that look like it may work, but there are deficiencies or things wrong, you can have a bidder's conference that addresses the concerns so that they can then have a BAFO so that the bidders can refine their application to make it the best competitive that they can. Have you considered that, or have you been in that process before?
You can. That's not the process that we previously designed. We, we didn't design it that way. We, we sort of did a little bit of that with the request for clarification that we did as part of the original process, where there were questions. We went back and asked for information to try to shore up and figure out appropriate scoring for those components. But that's not, you have to write that into your process. If you want to do it that way, then you need to make sure that it's spelled out in your proposal, in your RFP.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I don't know if other counselors were. I think that would have been a great thing to do, and possibly, is it in this RFP?
It is not. And that, if council wants to do some kind of a process like that, we could design that. I can bring a draft back to you in a little less than two weeks if we want to do it that way.
Any further questions from council? Okay, so I had written down a couple things. Did you want to go back through the section 5D final scoring? I just wrote that you made a comment about overseeing that or something?
Yep, there's a, there were two points, I think, that I wanted to make sure that I got feedback on. See if I can find them. I should have made notes on those. 5D, okay, those are the two. So this piece, the at council's discretion, there would be an opportunity to revise proposals or provide supplemental information. So is that something that we would want to include? Should it be deleted? Should it be revised to make it more of a bidder's war type scenario where we go back and forth trying to get best proposals? What would council like to see?
Any questions from council? Rob?
Well, I think it's, if we're going to do that at all, I think it should, it should say that applicants will be given, or may, will be given an opportunity to revise their proposal, as opposed to council's discretion, because council's discretion, we could end up in a four-four situation with the mayor having to break a tie on something that's, we should have worked out ahead of time. So I think the council's discretion part needs to absolutely go away. Where we go on that, I, I could take that either way, but the council's discretion part needs to be nailed down tonight.
Yep, and if you want the council discretion part out, I would recommend taking the entire sentence out. I don't think, saying we're going to go through this process and then you get a chance to revise your proposal automatically would be reasonable.
Then, again, I, I don't, I don't trust the nine people up here on the council's discretion part, so I would say then we need to remove the whole thing, would be my opinion.
Any further questions from council in regards to removing the whole sentence? Eric?
Maybe something has to be put there in terms of final interviews, how we feel after interviews. I don't know what, in what, in what order that the final interviews are going to go in.
It, it would go, you do your initial scoring based on the information you receive. You do your initial scoring prior to coming to the meeting. At the meeting, you do the interview. You update your scores based on whatever additional information you have. And you shouldn't be making your decision on which one goes forward at that point. This sentence was only in there to allow the opportunity to, if additional information was needed, to go back and request it. An alternative to that would be, we could instead delete that with the understanding that if additional information was in fact needed, we could do an amendment to the RFP to seek that.
Okay, so this takes place much after the final interview?
This would be, if you wanted additional information, you'd have to get the additional information after the interview and then come back later to make a final decision. So it would extend the timeline significantly.
Okay.
Further questions? I got Victoria and then Rob. Victoria?
So it seems like if we were going to do this, it makes more sense to me to do it after an initial scoring. So as we are going through, if we wanted to do this, after we go through our initial scoring, if we were then to ask either Stephanie or Karen or however, whatever process we came up with, that, hey, I have this question about this application, and then that would be, the question should also be distributed to everyone. And then it could be determined whether or not that could be something we should ask. So it seems, it would be maybe a little bit complicated to do this, so maybe it's a good idea not to do it. But if we were going to do it, it makes sense to me to be done before someone came to an interview, not after.
Well, hopefully, if you're asking for additional information, you'd be doing that at the interview. They would come in and you'd ask the questions that you want those answers to.
Well, I, I, it just makes more sense to me that you ask those questions after you go through your initial scoring.
Right, which would be the interview process. So when the applicant comes in and talks to you, you'd be able to ask whatever questions.
I thought we were going to do, come to that meeting with the applications with our scores.
Yep, you do your initial scoring, and then you ask the applicant any questions that you have, and then you update your scores for your final score. So that interview process would allow you to ask for whatever additional information that you needed.
Yeah, well, I would take it out, but I, I think if we're going to get these a day before, or, you know, four days before, or something before we come in for the interviews, I think that would be the time to ask for additional information. That just makes sense to me.
So we're still on the topic of the sentence at hand?
Leave it in or take it out.
Any further questions? Rob?
Yeah, to me, the, the interview portion would basically be the time when we're getting any additional information. You would think at that point that the applicant would have pretty much, they'd be loaded for bear. They'd have everything that we could possibly want to know, I would think. To me, the interview would be allowing them to provide any, any clarity or any additional information. It would be clean, it would be predictable.
Any further questions in regards to this? So we have either strike the sentence or not. So does council want to weigh in on striking the sentence? We'll just do a quick roll call vote. Nicholas, I mean, Indra?
It doesn't matter to me.
Rob?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
I don't think it's one way or the other. I think the interview's going to help everything.
Rick?
I'm looking at the sentence, and I think if we're talking interview, and that presents an opportunity for more information at the interview, which has been stated, if it's covered, but I hate to close the door if somebody forgot to dot the i across the t. So, thank you.
Eric?
I agree with, with Rick, but if this, if it's going to be a problem, we can strike it.
Joel?
We basically can do the same thing during the interview process, so I would go ahead and strike it. It doesn't forbid it happening, but we will do it during the interview process.
Victoria?
I, strike the sentence.
Okay, I got a majority to strike the sentence.
Thank you.
So the last point I had written down was, Rob brought up some language change within the reference section, and I believe his comment was to at least strike the local word.
And what I, what I would suggest there is to take out local and say a government entity such as a city, county, or district.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that we, we didn't pass that over. Any further questions in regards? Rob, and then Rick. Rob?
So again, on page, page 16, the very bottom line, Stephanie went over it, but just to be clear, hopefully, we didn't necessarily agree to it. All other communications may be deemed improper and may result in disqualification. To me, that should be a bright red line. All the communications will be deemed improper and will result in disqualification. We've already seen what it's like getting 50 emails from a potential provider, or a half a dozen of them in the last few days from a different provider. It's just ridiculous. So having that go through one, one person, which I guess the most reasonable person for that job would be the city attorney, having all communication go through that person, anything, anything else should be cause for elimination.
So change this to?
Does anybody else on council want to weigh in on that, before I go to Rick? Okay, Rick?
I'd like to hear from the rest of council if they want something in a background check or else in the document concerning, could be current lawsuits with an applicant. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions in regards to Rick's statement? Eric?
Yeah, I think it's important to look at lawsuits. I don't know how we can tie that in, but if there's any existing lawsuits from prior occurrences, maybe, maybe it is a good idea.
Rob?
So the question would be lawsuits against whom? The, the, everyone on the board? The lead applicant? Who? You know, to me, I would also add to that concept a credit check. If we're going to give $1.2 million to somebody who may have had a very checkered past, or, you know, may have really poor credit, that might be a really foolish thing for us to do. So I'd like to see at least a credit check on a lead applicant, for sure. Possibly lawsuits against the lead applicant might also be helpful, but I'd like to see a credit check before I give $1.2 million to somebody. And ever actually did finish the discussion about whether or not improper attempts at communication would be cause for disqualification. But we can do those in either order. We can do Rick's concern or Eric's concern with possibly a credit check or a We can do Rick's concern or Eric's concern with possibly a credit check or any kind of pending lawsuits or any lawsuits I'd also like to go back to improper communication.
And we could potentially put the lawsuits, and I believe there's something about credit or at least the financials in the risk assessment, we could look at adding a question in there regarding litigation. I think the risk assessment is designed to hopefully alleviate any concerns about the credit check, given that it goes into the details about controls, audits, have they ever had issues with compliance with grant funding, things of that nature. So it's a pretty robust risk assessment.
And to go back to your other point, Rob, I believe Stephanie's already changed the language in the improper communication to be?
Right, unless there's an objection to making it will instead of may.
Did that verbiage change suffice? Okay, thank you. Victoria and then Eric.
Well, I wanted to weigh in a little bit on all other communications, will or may. That's, it's a, I think may is a better word because it's a judgment call probably, and so I would rather have it be may, but I'm fine either way, it doesn't matter, but I think that it probably is a judgment call. So it may seems to give everybody the most leeway. But as in regards to a credit check, it's kind of my understanding of going through the processes of going through the first one when we created it, we aren't giving money to an applicant. We are, it would go directly like into escrow for land and things like that or to huge capital expenses. We're not giving someone a check for $1.2 million, is that correct?
Correct. We would have some protections in place. One of those would be that if it's for purchase of property, it would go through escrow. Another would be that as much as possible, it would be done on a reimbursement basis as opposed to an advance, and if it were to be an advance, we would find ways to make sure that it was being utilized appropriately if that's needed.
Okay, so I don't know as though we need a credit check if it's done that way. But, and background check, I think I remember when we went through this before the first time that you said it's usually not done and it's probably not a good idea. Those are things that I remember from the last time, so I wouldn't be for that. But I would be interested, I mean, if there is a lawsuit pertaining to this whole process, that would be something that would be important for, I think there, what people are expressing about that, I think, is probably important. So, and I wanted to, but we need to finish that. I have one more question about scoring on page fifteen, but I'll wait till we get through these.
Okay.
Any further questions? I got Eric and then Indra.
So, Rob, I didn't say anything about credit check. I said the lawsuit, if an existing lawsuit is happening. Okay, so don't lump me into that. Trust is a two-way street.
Any further questions? I got Indra and then Kathleen. Indra?
So Victoria brought up something that sparked a question. We won't be giving cash to the applicant, but we will be giving them money to buy the land. The land will be in their name, the applicant's name, correct?
Correct.
So the applicant owns the land. If the land is paid off, they are owner of the land, which is worth money.
Correct.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
So in the last go-around, we, it was briefly talked about whether a person or an applicant has filed for the 501(c)(3). Is that going to be, is that going to have some weight in this?
We can ask for that information if they've registered in the state of Oregon. It is required to do business and actually proceed, but there's nothing in statute that says that you have to have that to try to get things initiated. There's the consequences for not being registered are essentially that you don't have standing in a court proceeding and that you get fined $100. So it's not that your contract or your proposal or anything like that is voided.
Do you think that would be important to know that upfront?
It's up to council. If you want to narrow your pool of potential entities to just those that already operate in the state of Oregon, then you can do that. We are a border county, so the possibility of having someone from across the border that is familiar with the area, that can still provide an application, they just haven't gone through the process of registering, it would prohibit them from applying if we made that a requirement. So it just expands your pool. We would require them to be registered prior to actually proceeding. That would be in the contract.
Any further questions? I got Victoria and then Rob.
Yeah, just to kind of carry out the land in our application, I remember from the last time, and I imagine that it is still the same, that the land would be owned by the applicant, but there are many parameters that say if it needs to be used for this purpose and it needs to, and if it ceases to be used for this purpose, the city gets to buy it back for a dollar or some, and so that remains the same. Is that correct?
It would, yes. We would ask for the same terms for any piece of property.
Good. I think that that is good. But I do have a question on page fifteen about the scoring. I really understand the need, project need, taking those down, but I had a little bit of a question when I was looking back through this about why location jump from 10 to 30? And I couldn't remember what the discussion was.
Because there's a whole lot more information that we wanted that we didn't get the first time. We wanted more detail about the code compliance. In order to get all of that information, it just makes sense to increase the points. And in a lot of the discussions, we were giving it fairly equal weight with the services that were going to be provided, so we should make sure that that's reflected in the scoring as well.
Okay, so it's not just necessarily that this is the most attractive location, it's code compliance and the ability to do the services on the site. That is put into that determination for those extra 20 points?
Yep, the site questions are the additional information about, the documentation about transfer and possession of control, the description of the preliminary site plan with the visual representation, the code compliance, the process for receiving approvals, and minimizing adverse community impacts would all be added to that site section in order to justify increasing those points.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me more now. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, a couple of things. So Stephanie, you were just, in your response, you talked about when having to be registered in the state, and you mentioned 501(c)(3). Not every, we're not requiring that an applicant be a nonprofit.
We're not, no. And I did not say 501(c)(3). I said registered business.
You said both.
If I did, it was repeating that, but it's, we don't require it to be a 501(c)(3) necessarily. I believe that the way that it worded, and I have to go find it. Nonprofit organizations, community organizations, businesses, individuals, or other entities other than governmental entities.
Right. That's what I, that's the way I thought it read, but, so, and that's your intent, that's fine.
That is the intent, yes. So they, if we want to require them to be registered, we can do that, but that would narrow our applicant pool.
Yeah, okay. And I'd also like to apologize to Eric if I misrepresented the background check comment. It's been my experience that often that within a background check is also a credit check. I view them as actually as pretty much the same thing or part of the, part and parcel. So I'm just wondering, what would be the negative of asking for a credit check for the lead applicant? What's the negative?
If you're talking about the entity, your questions are all going to be answered by?
Well, I said the lead applicant.
So the actual person, because the applicant should be the entity itself and the representative of the entity. The, if you're talking about the individuals, they're not, their credit isn't necessarily going to be reflective of how their organization operates. If they have a board that makes all the decisions, the credit check of a single individual isn't going to tell you anything because the board itself is actually going to be the one making decisions. So they would override any potential concerns that would be related to a particular individual's credit check. Where you want to see things about a business is with audits and other financial and their accounting practices and things like that, which is what is addressed in the risk assessment.
Okay, so basically then what you're saying about a credit check would also apply to a background check because it would be the same thing. It wouldn't be the lead person you're saying would be a board.
Correct.
So again, for the same reason.
Right. A background check's not going to do a lot of good on an individual unless it's a service provider providing direct services.
Any further questions? Okay, so did we address all your points of questions or changes? Is there anything else that you wanted to bring up?
We did. I guess the only question I have left is where do you want to go from here? I know there were some things brought up. I guess the, whether we want to ask about pending or prior litigation and what parameters we want to include on that. We could do that within the risk assessment. That might be a reasonable place to do that, and if we want to wait to issue this until we can get the resolution canceling the previous grant program and how we want to accomplish that timeline.
So question back to council, do you want to add verbiage in the risk assessment that deals with lawsuits specifically parameter around operating this facility? I mean, that's?
I can come back with some language about it, make it, because we don't want just anything, but kind of narrow it to things that would be relevant, and we can use that in a risk assessment to some extent. We'd have to be careful about how we did that, and the other piece I would be able to look into then is the, now I'm drawing a blank on it, whether or not we can keep information confidential about property.
Okay. Does anybody on council have objections for adding this information into the risk assessment? I don't see anybody objecting, so we would task you with that.
I will do that.
And then the other, the last item you were talking about?
I guess timelines. Where do we want to go from here? We can, if we're ready to proceed with this, which I know there was a lot of discussion, a lot of questions, and some things that are still a little bit outstanding that either I can address them if council wants me to, or we can come back with the additional components. But we, this is a sample timeline. We could, even if we waited the two weeks to get to our next, oops, go back, next meeting, we would still hit this intent to award date of November 5th because just the way meetings fall in October, so we could come back and address it then and just shift our timelines to accommodate it. And then you would be able to have that final version with all of the changes we've talked about and all of the questions that you've asked tonight.
Victoria?
Can we move just to go forward, vote? Would it be appropriate just to say, yes, let's go forward tonight pending the three things that we need, the land, the lawsuit, and the resolution? So we're going to vote to, I would like to propose to vote to move this forward with those three provisos that they may have to be, come back within two weeks.
So we're still at question, so that is your question if you want to proceed it forward. We still have some stuff to do before we can get council to discuss.
All right, well, that's what I would be proposing.
So basically Stephanie was just highlighting that even if, whatever time period we pick, we still are in focus on the award, intent to award date of November 5th.
Yep. These pieces would remain as shown on this slide, even if we move our issuance date to accommodate the additional information and revisions.
Okay, and then you can follow up with the slide of potential motions, and we'll go into.
Okay.
Any further questions before I end this section? Indra?
How are we going to advertise this new RFP?
It would go out the same way that all proposals go out, so it would be posted on the city website, there would be the press release the same way that we did before. If there's additional places you would like it released, we would be able to, we can do that. I just need to know where they are.
And is this a standard timeline for proposal, or is it a rushed one?
It's a rushed one. I mean, the amount of time to get an application in is a little, about three and a half weeks, which is a fairly short timeline, but with as much discussion as we've had, hopefully applicants have something in mind at this point, especially since we've already had some applications. So hopefully that wouldn't be a problem for applicants.
So the RFP process is supposed to be fair to all. Do you feel it's fair if there's a new applicant that's looking because the ones that have already applied have most of their stuff all together because it's mostly the same, they just have to tweak it? So if there's a rushed timeline, is that going to be fair to a new applicant?
I guess three plus weeks would not be unreasonable for a proposal. It is, given the expanse of what we're asking for, it is a short timeline, and it would take some heavy lifting, but it is doable. So our last one, we didn't have much longer than that when the first one we issued. It was a very short timeline as well. So we can, we can expand those timelines and push those dates out a little bit more, but that's up to council, what kind of timeline you want.
Any further questions? Rob?
So we looked at personnel that would be interacting with residents at such a site. There'll be background checks on those people. And so who's responsible then? Would the city or the entity be doing those background checks?
The entity. They would be, either they would be doing them or they would be requiring any partners or contractors to provide those background checks and make sure that those are being done. And most, for some of the service providers, the professionals, the licensed, the certified ones, a lot of those require background checks as part of licensure as well. You can't have a license if you don't meet those criteria.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Joel?
I'm not sure it's a question, but I'll just spit it out. It seems like for an applicant, you have to coordinate with your partners, get a memorandum of understanding, and a lot of times when you're evolving other organizations, it takes a little more time. And so it seems to me like if any applicant requested an extension of the time to respond to the proposal, up to two weeks, that we would honor that.
That would be unheard of as far as I'm aware. You don't extend your deadline. If you want to make sure that there's ample time, you build that in upfront. We're not going to?
And do it right upfront.
Do it right upfront.
Oh, do you think there's adequate time for people to coordinate with their partners?
Not unless they're already coordinating. I think the three and a half weeks would be a short turnaround unless they're already, they've already got something in the works.
So, and either way, I certainly would honor those that have already coordinated and appreciate that, but to be fair, I think we probably need to go to five and a half weeks or something like that, just to make sure they got adequate time to coordinate with their partners.
And I can come back with a stronger timeline that would allow for that. And part of that, if we do extend that timeline, we could look at requiring the preapproval.
Yeah, and maybe they don't need it, I don't know, but to me, it seems like that might be unrealistic.
Rob, and then Victoria. Rob?
And just to be, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this more clearly before, I didn't follow up. So with regards to the entities doing background checks on their employees, does, how will the city be able to get copies of those or know that they were done or know that everyone there is licensed? What enforcement mechanism are you building into this?
It would probably be the same as everything else which is complaint-based. If we find out that they're not, then we take action, but we're not going to be checking up every month to make sure that everybody's on the premises, has a background check. That's the entity's obligation to make sure that that's happening. If they don't, and if we find out that there's a problem, then we have legal teeth to be able to address it.
That doesn't give me a lot of confidence.
There's no staff to be able to do enforcement on everything that we build into contracts. There's just not. So we have to do it on a complaint basis if we find out. That's how, then we react.
So can you bring the timeline back up? So I did, sorry, go ahead, Victoria, I didn't mean to overstep you. Go ahead.
Well, I wouldn't be in favor, I would be in favor of, what I'm looking for is relief for the city. So I would not, if we can move for, if it's reasonable to do this in your opinion and fair legally, maybe fair isn't right, if it's legal for us to do it in a shorter amount of time, I wouldn't be in favor of extending, of extending the timeline because I'm in favor of making sure we get this issue taken care of for the city more than making it fair for a hypothetical. more than making it fair for hypothetical applicants. But I, I mean, not to say that I want it to be unfair to anyone, but I would be in favor of moving forward. And, but I had a question. Have we decided, what have we decided about the background checks? I guess I'm not clear about, I mean, did that go in there? I didn't, I don't know if we made a decision on that, but maybe I was just unclear.
With background checks, the only thing I would recommend is that we require those within the contract. I wouldn't recommend anything beyond that other than the risk assessment.
Okay. So after award, you're talking about, okay, for operations?
Yep. The entity would have to make sure that appropriate background checks were being done.
Okay, thank you.
So it has been floated by a couple counsel members to extend the timeline for the application preparation period. So Seth, you have a question?
This is based on that.
Okay, sure.
If we, I'm not necessarily for that, but can we, if we do decide to extend it, can we just still keep the fully operational date the same? So it, I mean, it cuts, I mean, that date's already pretty tight in itself, but then it's kind of up to the applicant, I guess.
Right. It really depends on what you want to do and how fast you want to do things. You know, we've, this is a pretty short timeline. If you want the time for applicants to submit a full proposal, maybe building in some additional weeks would be reasonable. And that's kind of what I'm hearing from a number of counsel members. If you think that the three and a half weeks will be sufficient, then we can move forward with the three and a half weeks. But that is, again, a short timeline.
So let's get full counsel. Rob, do you have a question?
No, but I think you were about to call for some kind of discussion on that.
I was actually going to get a vote on if you wanted to have Stephanie extend the timeline.
Okay. I was going to comment on that.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, assuming that we just had two applicants and it was the same two applicants, they should be prepared with about 85% of their application. There is the possibility that we could have an out of area person apply and it could take a week or two or more for them to even find out about the application. So that would leave them a matter of days potentially to come up with a pretty involved application. So basically, we'd be cutting out anyone, I think, other than these two. If that's what we want, we would go quick. If we're hoping that we'd actually get a broader, potentially a broader selection, we should go more the way Joel was, Joel was talking. And that's actually the way that I would lean. Unfortunately, that does leave us another few weeks of potentially, another few weeks until we solve our problem. But to me, again, if somebody, takes somebody a week or two to even find out about this RFP, I don't think it's realistic for them to, to be able to come up with this, to drop everything they're doing and come up with this application in a very, in a matter of days. I don't think that's realistic.
Indra?
I would concur with that. If we're doing a new RFP, it should be fair to everybody. There could be someone local new that wants to apply and they don't have all their stuff put together. It would be, as you said, a very heavy burden and almost impossible to do.
Right.
Okay. So the question on the table for the counsel is, would you like to direct Stephanie to extend the timeline in the beginning to make it a little bit longer period for people to put applications together? We'll just do a vote on that. Indra? Yes or no?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right. So you have direction. Please extend the timeline and bring that back to us.
I do. I will be back as soon as possible with the extended timelines and all the things that we have discussed here.
Thank you. Any further questions? Kathleen, questions. No comments. Questions. We'll get to that in a second. Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll let Stephanie go, leave up those. And at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. So anybody here want to weigh in on this topic at hand? Please step up to the podium. We do have one person online, so I'll take a couple people from the audience and then we'll get the person online. And please, this is comment period for this topic only.
Hi, my name is Sonia Villa. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've been in Grants Pass for three years. I wanted to offer two pieces of advice. I've been a social worker for the last 20 years, working with the government, community agencies, and private practice. I have been on RFP decision boards before. Anyone making decisions on RFP really needs to be a longtime social worker, be familiar with unhoused population, and have knowledge of evidence-based programs in order to choose the best agency to receive the funding. Being a city employee does not alone qualify anybody to make a good decision about the RFP. Suggestions like Riker and Benham about complaints about background checks, drug counselors have lived experience. That's why they do the work they do. They're going to have a record. You're excluding, you're making more barriers for the agencies that are applying. I'm not applying, but you're making more barriers because you don't know social work. You don't know these populations. Treatment or recovery, Ms. Attorney, if you don't know the difference between treatment and recovery, you shouldn't be making, writing that RFP or making decisions about it. Recovery, a person, if you're giving services for a person to recover, you're actually giving them treatment. So if you don't know what you're doing, why are you even writing it or voting on it if you don't have the experience? The second piece of advice is, all agencies have their strengths. Not one agency can do everything. The unhoused population has been a very special population to myself. So I've built an app called Homunity. It's for another gap for cohousing for people that are not drug addicted, that just need reduced rent. Although I'm not affiliated with Pathways to Stability, an assessment center like that agency would work with multiple agencies to have individual strength, individual strengths by agencies to work together. So please hear my advice and get a social worker board to advise you on actually what this RFP is seeing.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name is Jace Daggett. I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I'm generally in support of this whole endeavor, but I did want to provide some historical context. Four years ago, there was a property on N Street that was up for consideration. That was ultimately admonished by the council, the city, and even the All Care Foundation, who were the people who originally proposed it. And the reason for that was due to its proximity of Riverside Elementary. So in that spirit, I wanted to bring up some objective criteria that was ultimately discussed four years ago, which disqualified properties based off of proximity to public schools. Riverside Elementary was 480 feet away, so they disqualified schools that were 750 feet away in that instance. I didn't know if we were past the point of considering new objective criteria for property, so I just wanted to bring that back up. If it were any bit further away, I would be fully in support of it, but I just want to make sure we don't repeat history with recommending non-starters. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie McDonald and I'm a resident of Grants Pass. And I just had a question on the timeline. The very last date was the fully operational date. It was May 25th of '25. Is that, is it supposed to be '26 or is it '25?
It would be '26.
I'm kind of confused with that.
It would be '26.
'26?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So the-
Yeah, probably. Sorry, apologize. We are human. It's probably just a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, counsel. My name's Greg Cure and I'm a resident of Josephine County for a good 40 years. I've had a little bit of experience with ministering to the homeless people for 33 years in the area. And I'd like to have an opportunity, this might be not acceptable or what, but I'd like to meet with mayor and two county, city council members to do, present a divine plan that I believe would be very successful for you to consider, just the three, sometime this next week, if that's possible. And I'm not keeping for the rest, from the rest of you, because if it does the litmus test, if it passes Kathleen and Council Marshal and the mayor, if that's possible, then everybody would learn about it. So I want to be respectful of people's time. This would be about an hour meeting and I would appreciate that, mayor, if that was possible.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Avery Steele. I live in the county, but I'm a senior attending Grants Pass High School. I would like to encourage you to award this grant sooner rather than later, so the current residents of the downtown camps can be relocated. Being in my fourth year of attending Grants Pass High School, I am one of many other students who has noticed a large increase in both secures and lockouts, many of which were the result of a homeless individual in the area in only a few short years. I personally no longer feel that my education is taking place in a safer neighborhood. And I would hope this grant to be awarded so future students at Grants Pass High School can gain their education in a safer environment. Thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you. And Karen, do we still have our online? Go ahead and let, let him weigh in and then remind me it's two minutes.
Bernie, you need to hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
This is Bernie Woodard with Elk Island Trading Group. We're one of the applicants on the current application. Two minutes is not long, but the grant was already good the way it is. Grants Pass City Council took time to put it together and there should be no changes. It needs no changes. It should play out to the last applicant standing, which appears to be clearly Elk Island Trading Group LLC. Don't change it, just finish it. No matter how messy it gets, the community needs this to be done. People are getting ready to be in the cold and rain. They don't need to see the city thrown into another action of litigation. If the city goes ahead and cancels this grant application, there will be a protest and there will be a judicial review by the county court and that will take time. Elk County Trading Group has stood by and watched this thing change along the way. In June, it was all good. In July, it was all good. In August, it was all good. It only became not good and needed changing when Elk Island Trading Group was the last applicant standing and that had been complying with everything that was required in the RFP. I have 40 years in history experience with RFPs in the government, the federal government, and never have I seen anything like this. I see corruption here and we need to weed it out. Homelessness is not about being Republican, Democrat, Christian, non-Christian. It is about just a human problem that is brought on by many personal situations that each needs a solution. Kicking this can even down the road another week or changing it from what it is now to favor other applicants to be able to get another bite at the apple or another grab at the rope is not fair. I've heard tonight different changes, calling Elk Island Trading Group unqualified. Elk Island Trading Group has three city sanctioned-
Sorry, Bernie, that's two minutes. Thank you. Any further comments?
Yes.
And we are commenting on the topic at hand.
I heard.
Thank you.
Mike Pelfrey, city resident. I have sent emails, probably, I don't know, many emails to the city. I don't know why you folks are trying to make this so difficult. I mean, this is the most painful thing to sit here and listen and watch and experience. You guys are so dysfunctional, it makes me want to throw up. So here's the deal. I've told you that, why are you trying to reinvent something? Why don't you reach out to cities that have already figured this out? I've told you about the city of Walla Walla, Washington. That's a population that's smaller than Grants Pass and yet they were able to figure this out for their city. They have a nonprofit that's overseeing a shelter program. And not only that, but the city owns the land. You guys are going to try to buy, that's probably going to be the most difficult part of this. Why don't the city buy the land or identify the property? The city owns it. Put the nonprofit on there. Let them do their job. They're not real estate people. Get that out of the equation. The city needs to find the property, do it themselves, put a nonprofit on there, let them do their jobs. And then the other thing that I pray is that, because if the city has anything to do with it, all I would ask every one of these folks that are sitting in this audience is to go across the street and look exactly how the city is managing these unsightful camps. That is the most despicable thing I've ever seen in my life. I mean, and when I say despicable, it's disgusting and you should be ashamed of yourselves that we have that across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up.
Mike Servant. I'm a city resident across the street from the homeless camp. I can't even begin to tell you how disappointing it is that this grants process was derailed in part by inappropriate and unethical ex parte communication from members of this council, which has directly corrupted this process and has put this nightmare in our front yard for now another three months. This was supposed to end in February. We were told this was temporary. And now we're looking at June. It's going to be over a year. And the city steadfastly refuses to manage this camp in a way that it's not a chronic nuisance property. That is unacceptable. This is no longer an emergency situation. We are no longer under an injunction. You could manage this differently if you chose to do so. You know, this process that you went through and corrupted this entire grant process not only extended the deadline, but it left the city open to further legal action. And I think that's the last thing that the city wants is yet another lawsuit against the city. I'm glad to see that the revised grant application will contain some additional considerations for code compliance and 24/7 management, and as well as an impact statement on the, what the impact would be to the local community. None of those were afforded to us before this was put in. You clearly understand the nature of the problem because you're requiring 24/7 management for whatever project goes forward. I don't understand, I still don't understand why that's not a consideration for the camp that's in place right now, that has active management. You know, the council should have known better than to handle this the way it was handled and go beyond the RFP process. You know, you should have known better. And maybe that's giving you too much credit. I mean, I've watched nothing but one bad decision after another that's been, come out of this council. From the minute you were seated and voted to close the J Street camp without a plan in place and against the advice of the attorney, it's been downhill since then. And I don't have any confidence that you're going to get out of your own way to fix this. And I don't think the voters have any confidence left in you either.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead. Comments are specifically to this topic?
To this topic, yeah, especially since it was speakers of this topic. And I don't know, with all the darkness, I thought I'd shed a little light. And that was, through the filming that I've done and through the influence I've done, I've seen high school kids walk through when I was filming and taken, you know, do their little jokes, whether it was real or not, of, well, we're going to go through and we're going to do our drugs. And well, tonight, I wanted to make light and say, this young lady right back here, a high school student came up here and spoke in this council. So instead of all the naysay and all the dark, sometimes we got to put some positive. And what I see is the public coming forward and taking action. And that's what I want to be about. I want to be about one of those that says, hey, instead of being one of those people behind a keyboard, making a comment on something otherwise known as, I think I'm going to do a shirt on it, as a little rainbow troll, okay? Come forward, speak into the damn mic, tell people what you think and what's going on and make a change that way. Do something real, not behind a keyboard.
Thank you. Any further comments? And let's keep it to the topic of the grant, please.
I'm April.
Thank you.
I currently stay in one of the homeless camps. And I am thankful that the city has provided the three homeless camps that are there. I'm thankful that there are porta-potties. I'm thankful that somebody has provided the money for that and for water towers. It is a crazy place to stay. There is nowhere else for some people to go. I'm concerned about the grant, talking about substance abuse, kind of like number one, because there are many substance abuse programs already in the city. And I think that the money should be given to them and you should create a shelter or a supervised camp, or three, that people can stay at where things are not as crazy. I think the location where it is right now is good. I don't think that anybody in the city wants it to- I don't think that anybody in the city wants to stay there, but I think right now people have access to Safeway. They have access to job searching, the bus station, things like that. So I think the location right now is good. I think that there are definitely problems. There is really no oversight, and who can do that? If you guys did put money into having oversight there now, it could be much smoother. I don't understand the ninety-six-hour moving. To each camp, you're supposed to move to a new camp every ninety-six hours unless you're disabled. I don't understand that. If there is nowhere else for people to go, where will they go? A police officer recently told me that most people don't think these people are local, and almost everybody there is local, where they're pushed out of their city for whatever reason, and they have to be here. They're stuck. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to solve this, but I think you should put money into the existing instead of something new, unless it's going to work.
Thank you. Further comments? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Kobe Giesler. I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I heard you guys discussing about background checks and like the possibility of like having the, not having enough staff to follow up to make sure that there are background checks on file. I was just curious if you guys could request that they submit the proof of some sort or signed thing from their employees stating that they submitted to a background check to just have on file with the city. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further comments in regards to the grant?
I just want to say that I am happy that this process allows businesses and individuals beyond nonprofits and such, because in my opinion, nonprofits are not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments in regards to the grant and the process?
Hi, my name is Jeff Bech, resident of Grants Pass, and I just want to second the previous gentleman's concern about putting it on the N Street location. I think it's unconscionable to put a homeless shelter in proximity to an elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi, my name is Ken Hadama, local businessman, fifty-two years here. I have a business on N Street, so I'll just bring that up, but this sort of project belongs on city property. If you put it next to any business, it affects it negatively. You put it in any neighborhood, it affects it neighborly. In business, you have a choice where to do business. You stick it next to my business, customers go elsewhere. You stick it in a neighborhood, your property values go down. People, you can't sell, you can't leave, because nobody wants to move in next to a homeless shelter. It needs to be a place like next to the police department or here, because one has no choice but do business with the city. You have no option, so it doesn't affect their business. You have to cross the bum lane in the street and take care of business at the city. You don't have to cross the bum to come to my business or any other business. That's the problem with putting it in any neighborhood. It will have a negative effect with the businesses or the neighborhood, period. There's no way around that. So I advocate for it to be on city property somewhere, and preferably as close to where people have to do business with the city. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Any further comments? And just to remind you, we do have general public comment later in the evening, so.
Hi, my name's Ron Lee. So all this talk about property has kind of sparked my imagination a little bit. If there's such a problem with certain properties, I know that this was originally designed to limit the city's liability moving forward and for lawsuits and such, but maybe if the city has properties that are available to them, they can make them available to the applicants. Just an idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments in regards to the grant? All right, see you none. Thank you very much for your participation. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Kathleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank city attorney Stephanie Nuttall for all the work you've put in and all the additions that seem to be good clarifying and helpful for the next go-around, and I think we learned a lot from the first go-around, and it's going to be better this time. I have a really good feeling about it. Thank you.
Any further discussion or action? Indra?
Yes, I don't even know where to start. I'm super disappointed, because as people spoke, this is disgusting, and I feel horrible for the people there. I feel horrible for the kids who walk by into the neighborhood. No one wants it in their neighborhood, so when you spoke about N Street or whatever, well, people are living here. They're living here with businesses and homes and children. And it's been here for how long? Over six months, maybe longer. And so it's unmanaged, so it's the most horrible thing ever. We're at least talking about having a nonprofit manage it, which will be better. So where that is put, the people who want help, like this young lady who came up and spoke, can get help there. And so to delay it, to me, it is sickening also. Like, we should have done this months ago, and we take so long. I don't know if you all remember, but initially, the city was going to buy property. The city was going to buy property and put a nonprofit on. It was hard to buy property. I don't know, we talk and talk and talk, and action doesn't get taken. And I'm really disappointed, because it seemed like we were progressing and we were going to choose a nonprofit. And I count on my colleagues here to be open-minded and fair, and the RFP process turned into a fiasco, because things were leaked out, and it wasn't until someone was chosen to come forward that this talk about redoing the process all over again came about. So it's very suspect to me. And the fact that we can't see the scores, and we don't know what the applications were, and as I mentioned earlier, the qualified versus non-qualified, which wasn't made clear when the presentation to bring GeoDomestic forward came out. And so to me, it makes sense, if they withdraw, then the next applicant is the one that's brought forward to look at. And I'm not saying I would have voted for GeoDomestic, but I was looking forward to at least having a presentation of the possibility to get this camp closed. And now, here we are, talking about, you know, five more weeks, which I think is fair, because I don't think you can put an RFP out in a rushed time for new applicants. So that's why I voted for that. So I'm just really disappointed. I think, I think as I hear from the community, that it's just suspect and fishy what's going on, and to redo an RFP is a big deal and to take all this time. And so I would make a motion to bring Elk Island forward at our next meeting to look at at least what they have and discuss that can we go forward with another group? And that's what I'm going to say.
Excuse me. Indra, are you making an official motion?
I am.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, and to bring Elk Island forward for-- sorry, can you restate that?
I would like to bring Elk Island forward for a presentation before the council, so that we could learn about their program and discuss if that fits our needs.
So councillor made a motion, there's a motion on the table, as stated. Is there a second? Rob, are you seconding?
Second.
Okay, there's a second by Rob. Any further discussion?
I'd like to discuss--
Yes, Stephanie.
I'm going to vote against the motion, because I feel that it's just going to drag out the process another X number of weeks. I don't think that this council is going to move forward on Elk Island at this point, regardless of, I just don't think it's going to happen. So I'm going to vote against that motion, because I think it's just going to stretch us out longer.
Okay. Did you want to weigh in there, Stephanie?
I actually don't think that we could do that under the way that our current RFP is written, so if you're talking about bringing it back under that, first, there was a vote to cancel that RFP, and second, it would be in conflict with the way that that RFP process was written to do it that way.
Okay. Stephanie, again, we never had a vote to cancel that RFP. We still have to do that, right? We went over that earlier in the meeting.
There was an actual vote yesterday to cancel the RFP.
You can't cancel the RFP in a workshop without public notice on that.
And we will address that.
Well, that's why I'm correcting you.
Further discussion? Victoria, Eric? Victoria?
Well, I'm a little confused, because if we want to, if we want to make sure this is done quickly, this would not accomplish that. So I will be voting no on this as well, and it just, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense, because it's going to delay the process that people have said that they don't want to have delayed, so I will be voting no.
Eric?
I've heard several comments in the public, and I've heard, I wanted to go ahead and address those. I think it's important that we understand how we even got here, how we're at this point today. And I've heard that, you know, it was irresponsible to shut down J Street. The surrounding businesses would beg to differ on that. The rampant crime, all of that, the water treatment plant that's there, the new one that's going in there today. So it had to be done, and we do have nonprofits in the area that are supposed to somehow absorb that, but that's a different topic. We do also have HB 3115, which is a state-funded mandate. It is unfunded. We have to comply by those, by that law. It requires low-barrier shelters. That's what those things are over there. Low-barrier, it's not even a shelter, it's a resting site. Low-barrier resting sites, meaning we can't do anything. The city, if the police see something, then they can act on it. But right now, it's considered a low-barrier temporary resting site. So Walla Walla, Washington, doesn't work, because it's Washington. It's got nothing to do with HB 3115, which we are beholden to. This is Oregon, not Washington. We are the only, we are the only city in this nation that can't even use its own Supreme Court case that it won. We're the only one. Why? Because of HB 3115, which was put into place. It was put into place to make that, to counter what we are doing, what we're trying to do here. So it's important to figure this out. So now, we're forced, we're forced to go with this grant program, because we have to go by HB 3115. And I think it's very important that we also include treatment and recovery. I know there was a lady here that was talking about treatment and recovery. That is, that is very important going forward here, because as everybody knows, many of the homeless that are in these camps have some sort of substance abuse problem. Therefore, they need treatment. If they don't have treatment, we're going to see what we're seeing right now. So I'm going to weigh heavily to make sure that whoever gets awarded this grant program is going to, it's going to consider treatment or recovery, whichever is better for that, for them to get off drugs. Now, obviously, it can't be mandatory either, because guess what? HB 3115 is not allowing that to happen. We have to go by HB 3115 standards, which cannot force treatment or recovery. They have to volunteer for that, okay? So to sum this up, we have to get this grant program going. Now-- I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Joel?
We need to get back to the motion that's on the floor, but I just wanted to point out to anybody that was thinking about applying, city lands are not off limits. So if somebody wanted to propose using land owned by the city, that is an option that can be proposed. We asked that at our last council meeting, and doesn't mean it'll be selected or not selected, but it is in the mix, and just because it's privately owned or city-owned, it shouldn't make no difference in the process. So everybody needs to know that.
Okay. Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the table. With a second. So I'll go into a roll call vote. This motion is to, correct me if I state this wrong, to bring Elk Island back to present their program in front of the council. With a second. Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Seth?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Rick?
No.
Eric?
No.
Joel?
I hope that they put in again, but I need more information from all applicants that was considered up here, so I'm going to vote no.
Victoria?
No.
Okay, motion does not pass. So bring it back to council for further discussion. Victoria, and then Indra?
Well, I want to make a motion that council can, that council tonight choose to adopt the revised addressing homelessness grant program.
There's a motion on the table to, which would be Alternative 1, is that what you're saving?
Yes, Alternative--
Council to choose to adopt the revised addressing grant homeless program. With a second from Kathleen. Any further discussion? Indra, you are up next.
Oh, yes, I would just-- I'm not for going forth with this grant. Eric said we are forced to do a grant. We are not forced to do a grant. The council voted to do a grant, which has turned into a fiasco, and now the council evidently is going to be scoring. I'm not sure that I trust my council members here, no offense, to do the scoring, because we know some have their minds made up already. And so I would suggest that we bring both of the remaining applicants forward. Why don't we have them do clarifying questions, have them do the interviews? I'm just, I just don't see why we have to take so long, when we know that we have two really interested parties that are either not qualified or have bad things on their application. I don't even know. So why don't we just cancel what we have, just bring them forward in a process that takes way shorter than putting out another RFP? I don't, I would suggest we do that and save a lot of time.
Okay, we're going to go into further discussion here. I just do want to point out, Victoria, since there was a lot of items that were discussed in modification, did you want to amend your motion to, for council to adopt the revised grant program with modifications discussed in this meeting?
Yes, with the modifications of the two items that you had to come back with us with legal questions, yes. So that, I bet for that to be stipulated in that. Thank you.
And just to clarify, that would be the lawsuit component in the risk assessment and the land confidentiality component? Are those the two that you're referencing?
Or three? Was that three?
Extended timeline.
And then the extended timeline. And just so council's aware, I did the math on the extended timeline. And if we postpone discussing the final issuance so that those could be answered to the next meeting, it would only extend that last date of full capacity by six days to, based on the way meetings fall.
Well, then I think that's okay. Yes, I, yeah, so amended.
Okay, so the motion has been amended with the modifications. Are you still good with your second, Kathleen? Okay. And we'll go back into further discussion. Rob?
So, a question for Stephanie. Do we have to officially end the original RFP before we can go forward with this? Or we have to have a special meeting to do that? Can it be done? How, because it needs to be done. So, how do we go about doing that?
I'm going to look into the process from yesterday and verify that that wouldn't, that doesn't satisfy the needs. If it doesn't, then we would need to come back. I think that the, an option would be to come back in two weeks with the clean version of this grant proposal. If we do that, the RFP would be issued September 18th. Five weeks from that for a due date would be October 22nd with review and interview on November 3rd, contracting by November 10th, or contract negotiations done by November 10th with it on the November 19th meeting for contract approval, which would allow for full capacity on May 21st rather than May 15th. So, we, we could come back in two weeks to address both components if we need to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Indra?
Wasn't there also a resolution that needed to be made for part of this?
There is a resolution in your packet for the new RFP. What I need to determine is what would need to take place for cancellation if that hasn't already been fully accomplished.
So, I don't see how council can vote. I mean, I guess you can want to vote on this motion without even seeing the product. I, for one, will not vote on something I haven't seen.
Any further discussion? Victoria?
I think the resolution we are talking about is the resolution to cancel the first RFP. Is that correct?
You do not have that resolution in front of you.
Right, I know that we don't, but that's, okay, all right.
The resolution you have in front of you would be to approve the proposed RFP.
Yes, and that, yeah, that was the motion. Yeah, I think, I think that we need to, for the public, we need to move forward. We need to not delay this. So, it would be good for us to vote on this tonight.
Just for clarification, the motion on the table is to proceed forward with the grant as modified, including the modifications discussed in, in tonight's meeting. So, if you're, if you have resolu, if you have reservations about voting on something that you're not seeing, you just saw everything that we basically will be changing. The only thing is you don't have the, the final timeline. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll go through a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Okay, motion passes. And you have full direction? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda tonight is a resolution adjusting water user rates for 2026. And I will hand it over to Jason for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That was a lot of discussion. Hopefully, this one's a little bit easier for you. Subject and summary, I actually have changed my subject and summary. I am asking you tonight to consider delaying a decision on the resolution adopting the proposed water rate. The questions that you asked, I was not able to pull together all of that information for you tonight. And so, I did not want to ask you to adopt that without getting answers to all of your questions. Questions included providing longer time periods for the projection to better understand the impact over time to the rate customers, providing the commercial rate impact examples because of the complexity of commercial billing. That was taking me a little bit longer than I had hoped, so I wasn't able to pull that together from yesterday. And then also the potential to spread out that, and the impact of those increases over a longer period of time. So, I wasn't able to redo those rate projections to, to see what that did over time. At the same time, I did want to give you a little bit more background. The rate model is very complex, making all of those things a little bit more difficult. It's, it's hard to ferret out what the individual changes will do. All of the proposed rate increases that we have shown you, it's really comprised of three moving parts. There is the base rate and the commodity charges, the treatment plant replacement fee, and then whether or not we're infusing additional URA funding into that. And each one of those makes a different impact to the rate structure. All of the parts change at the same time. It makes it difficult to figure out what that impact is. So, part of compiling the data requested was discovered that the two rate models, or the two of the rate models were providing a significantly higher coverage ratio than the third. And what that means is that while the coverage ratios, one of them was actually slightly below or right at the limit that we had set, 1.5. And that's the real important one for the bonding agencies. But the other two were actually providing it starting at 1.54. And while that sounds like a very, very subtle nuance, it actually is about a half a million dollars per year in rate adjustment. So, we really want to fine tune that and get it back in front of you with more accuracy. The other thing that we discovered as we started compiling information for you was that we don't believe that the model is correctly reflecting the safe drinking water revolving loan funds that have been approved and the final ones that we are set to receive on Monday, which was a $10 million loan, seven of which is loan, three of which is grant. It looks like they've actually included all of that in the loan column, which would also skew the data set a little bit. So, we've been trying to get the rate consultant busy, but we haven't quite done that. I'm gonna blast past that page. So, again, we just want to really ensure that the rate is adequate to fund all of our needed capital, but while being as small as it absolutely has to be to not impact our various customer classes. And just as an example, residential customers represent 84.15% of our revenue and 90% of our connections to the water system. So, we really want to make sure that we provide the absolute best data to you. So, with that, we did have the scheduled for tonight. We are now recommending we move that to October 15th. I would try to get it on the next meeting, but I don't think I can get everything done and in the council packet for you by next Tuesday. So, I just defer to that next available council meeting if you are okay with that. And I'm free for any questions that you have.
Any questions from council? Joel?
I'm willing to make a motion if there's no discussion. I move that we move this discussion to October 15th to allow more time to compile data to answer the council's questions, as well as ensure the lowest possible rate increase.
Perfect. And since this, this resolution has been requested by staff to be taken off the agenda and moved on, then we will, we will proceed with that motion. So, we have a motion to delay it till the next one. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, you will be voting on a motion to postpone this till a later date. Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
All right. So, it has hence been moved. Next on the agenda is a resolution establishing a procedure for employee salary adjustments. And I will, looks like Aaron will be taking us into this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, this is establishing a resolution to identify procedures for future employee salary adjustments. Past practice in the past has been that bargaining or non-bargaining have been approved through council consent agenda. And through this process, council expressed a desire to establish a policy that all salary adjustments be placed under council action. The resolution provides direction that all salary adjustments will be placed at a business meeting under council action unless otherwise directed by council. Your call to action is at your discretion. It'll establish a procedure for employee salary adjustments. You can approve the resolution as presented or not approve the resolution. There's a potential motion at the, on the screen. Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Any councilors have questions for Aaron? Joel?
If there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Okay, I move to approve the resolution establishing a procedure for employee salary adjustments.
We got a second? I have a procedural question.
You usually open it up to public comment before you do the motion?
That's what, I was just gonna clarify. Joel jumped the gun with that.
Sorry, folks. I withdraw my motion.
So, we are still having questions? Is, does any counselor have any questions for Aaron in regards to this topic? All right, seeing none. At this moment in time, we open it up to the public for public comment. Anybody want to step up a microphone and make a comment in regards to this topic? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. And I'm gonna give it back to you, Joel.
It's great that we have people comment. I move to approve the resolution establishing a procedure for employee salary adjustments.
And we have a second? All right. So, we have numerous seconds. It's great. So, we have a motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go through a roll call vote. Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda is resolution authorizing the funding of additional public safety positions as discussed in previous workshops. And this will ultimately go to help public safety by authorizing funding to increase personnel in both police and fire. As we discussed, I'll just briefly go through these quickly. There was a high organizational need for us to acquire additional FTE due to a number of things, including colleague burnout, increased workload, and other things like paid leave Oregon, and some of the challenges that we've been dealing with and timed onboard new and hi, new hires, et cetera. The benefits that we've talked about are multiple. We're really gonna be able to improve community safety and crime deterrence. We're gonna be able to increase services within the community with these 12 FTE. And it's gonna go to not only benefit the organization and the health of the organization, but also the services that the community will, will be able to provide. The 12 FTE, just as a reminder, provides an increase for police of six and fire of six. The current annual cost of that is projected to be approximately $1.8 million. That's at full hire immediately. We're not gonna get there. It's gonna take some time to recruit. And so, that's not gonna be an immediate impact on the budget of that price. But in months down the road, that would ultimately be the potential impact to the budget. This will require a budgetary fund balance policy revision in the general fund. We're not asking for that this evening. We're going to be assessing that. JC is gonna take the lead to determine what the full impacts are as the budget, as we continue, continue to go through the budget. And we'll plan on having discussions with council on that sometime between January through March. So, we'll be able to provide you with a general idea of what that might look like. At today's numbers, a $2 million reduction in the contingency is about 5%. So, we'd be looking at reducing it to about 5%. And we'll see where we lie in the future. Your call to action is at your discretion. The city council was looking at funding 12 additional FTE at a potential cost totaling all in at $1.8 million. And your alternatives are to approve the request, approve it with modifications, or not approve. And there's a potential motion in front of you, and I'm here for questions. Thank you, Aaron. Bring back the council for any questions for Aaron? Seeing none. Thank you, Aaron. At this time, this will be opened up to the public for a public comment in regards to this topic. Anybody wants to make a comment, please step up the podium now, specifically in regards to this topic.
Hello, I'm Koby Geisler again, resident of Grants Pass. I request that you guys find some measurable way to show the improvements of the services and the things that you were mentioning, and maybe a, a way to break down those costs further of the 1.8 million to hire 12 people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments in regards to this topic? All right, seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or motion. Seth, Kathleen, and then Victoria?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the funding of 12 additional full-time public safety positions.
Okay, there's a motion on the table with numerous seconds. We'll take Victoria as a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go into a vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Absolutely.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so, last on our council actions is resolution awarding Seed Collective Catalyst LLC an urban renewal grant for $80,050 for the Grants Pass Nexus incubator. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council.
Excuse me, stand. Do we have to go into URA mode, or?
It's not on the agenda.
So, it was, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna clarify. There was an adjustment to the agenda. The change in the agenda, I made some updates to the slides to represent and refer to the city council rather than the URA board, because this is actually a county, a city council action item.
I thought this was URA money we were talking about. No?
It is URA funding, but it's already been set into a lands and buildings project. So, it really is city council decision. Is that the best way to?
Yeah, just clarify. So, this money was gifted, or not gifted, but transferred five-plus years ago from the URA already to the city to deal with Innovation Hub. And so, that's why it's coming before you now as a council action and not a URA board action because technically it is the city's money.
But the project is an urban renewal project, so that's where you see the overlap here. So, I'm Dana Pierce from the Economic Development Division, and we are gonna be looking at this request for a business incubator startup from the Seed Collective Catalyst LLC. The subject tonight is a resolution to authorize the payment of a city council grant in an amount up to $80,050 over two years for startup costs, including build-out, core equipment, programming, and expansion of a business incubator and innovation space located in downtown at 218 Southwest G Street in Grants Pass. It relates to council goals of economic growth by encouraging economic vitality, growth, and diversification, and also ensuring downtown is a vibrant neighborhood and active destination. To give a little bit more background, the business incubator is actually Project 10 in the Urban Renewal Plan, and it's been in there since 2016. Between 2018 and 2020, Rogue Community College was partnering with the city and other community groups to develop the Rogue Innovation Hub. But subsequently, it failed to launch due to the pandemic at that time. Since then, we've had local community organizations trying to hold that torch and kind of keep that going. We do hear from our community the desire to, to have an incubation hub. And so, at this point, Dr. Kim Frees of the Seed Collective Catalyst has come forward to launch that. Dr. Kim Frees, she has 25 years of experience as an entrepreneur, educator, and ecosystem builder. She's here with us this evening. She has expertise in launching and managing business incubators specifically and fostering inclusive innovation in rural communities, also mentoring early-stage founders. She's also currently the acting director of the Southern Organ Innovation Hub, which is driving regional collaboration and development to support the startup pipeline. For the past few years, she has been stewarding the innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem right here in Grants Pass through One Million Cups events, pitch nights, and design workshops. Dr. Frees has designed and is now ready to launch the Grants Pass Nexus incubator. She envisions this to be a downtown launch pad for businesses, innovators, youth, and entrepreneurs. She'll serve entrepreneurs in food and beverage, tech sales, tech, art, and... She'll serve entrepreneurs in food and beverage, tech sales, tech, art, and product development to start. And then she will, or this incubator, will offer shared tools, training, hands-on education, collaborative meetups, workspace, and startup support. Here's a list of partners that are supporting this project. We have Rogue Community College, Small Business Development Center, SO Ready, which is Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development, Inc., Main Street Grants Pass, Visit Grants Pass, Oregon Entrepreneurial Network, Startup Champions Network, Kaufman Foundation, which also oversees One Million Cups and Fast Track, Common Connections, The Hive, Dwell House, Babbage, White Rabbit, On the Verge Social, and Tech Company. So they have a long list of supporters. This is to highlight the urban renewal objectives and how this project is gonna meet those. It's listed under Goal 3, under Development and Redevelopment, and there's a focus on strengthening and supporting an active downtown that'll complement, protect, and promote a continued growth and vitality of the current businesses there, and also attract new business. And very specifically under Objective 3, there is the goal to provide opportunities such as a Makerspace or business incubator to help start new businesses in the urban renewal area. Also, as a capital improvement project, it's called out here as Project 10, Business Incubator. And the expectations, this is the guide that we have to make our decisions related to this incubator, to provide access to resources for small businesses, serve as a catalyst for starting new businesses, and partner with local schools, community college, and Small Business Development Center. Here's the site of the proposed incubator. It's at Caveman Plaza, 128 Southwest G Street, in the heart of our downtown. And here are a few internal visual layout images. This shows a floor plan and some images of what we expect the incubator to look like. And here are a few more colorful images as well to kind of give you an idea of what this space would look like. The applicant also provided performance metrics for tracking. So these different tracking tools would be the public events hosted and attendance records, Makerspace utilization rates, satisfaction surveys and impact stories, revenue generated by startups incubated in the space, also workforce training and job placement, workshops that are offered, and entrepreneurs launched or scaled up. This was the startup budget provided by the applicant. It's an estimated two-year startup. You can see it includes a facility lease, the utilities are included in that, insurance, internet, and admin costs. You can also note that the program director, the full-time position there, will be paid by the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub. And then the startup equipment and tools are what are part of this request today, so you can see that highlighted in the middle. Workshop and curriculum development, that's already been developed, so there's no cost to that. Also, you can see marketing and training for the first year, as well as events and youth programming included. There was, we did receive one inquiry from a counselor regarding the funding sources of this project, and since Dr. Kim Frees is here, she's available to answer more detailed questions following the presentation. This is the two-year funding request breakdown for the specific request. You can see where the majority of the funds in the first year would go to help build out a commercial kitchen setup, and that's to support our food and beverage startups. There's also a list of other costs here. These are all hard costs or capital improvement costs. You can see also that in year one is the higher ask. It would expect to be $65,550 in the first year, with a smaller request in the second year of $14,500, totaling the $80,050. The revenue source for this would be the fiscal year '26 capital budget, LB 6344, for the Business Innovation Hub. There are funds available right now of $188,271. If this current request is approved at $80,050, the remaining would be $100,221. And as I mentioned, this would be for capital improvements and hard costs, which are eligible expenses under this program. So the call to action is this evening is at council discretion. You can move to action or move to another workshop. Your alternatives would be to approve the grant request for up to $80,050. You can modify the grant request or deny it. I've also provided a potential motion here, and I'm available for questions, as well as Dr. Kim.
Perfect, thank you, Dana. Bring it back to council for questions, Eric, and then Rick.
Thank you for the presentation. I have to confess, I have no idea what an incubator is, aside from what, if we can get a little bit of a, more of an understanding or a different word for incubator. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's an opportunity, it's a launching place for small business and startups. There's quite, you know, there's a lot of nuance to it. If you don't mind, I would hand it over to Dr. Kim to share more details.
Come on up, Dr. Kim.
She has a lot of experience in this.
Do I need to do anything fancy, or am I on?
Oh, you're on.
I'm ready. I have three pages of notes. Oh, up a little higher.
There you go.
Oh, there we go, we're in.
So if you want to just go ahead, like Eric's question is, it just gives us a little more synopsis on what the intention in here for an incubator.
Yeah, thank you. It's language that's associated with startup communities. I've been involved for about 25 years. It originated in Boulder, so you'll have the term incubator, accelerator. They're basically terms. The term Innovation Hub is a little bit antiquated as we move forward in the economic landscape changes and the needs of entrepreneurs. We're seeing more of a need for an incubator. I actually got asked by someone if I was hatching chickens, and I said, "No, I'm actually hatching entrepreneurs." But it's a space for startup support, resources, navigation. The incubation idea is that we help entrepreneurs either bring in an idea, scale, launch, all of those things. That's where the term incubation comes from. Welcome.
Rick?
Thank you, Doctor. So what would be your hours of operation, like eight hours once a month, or eight hours once a week, or what would you anticipate?
That's a great question. I anticipate it being open five days a week, and on Saturday, the location is next to the growers market, which part of that is to be able to support them. So really, this project is community, so it will be community-driven based on need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Victoria, and then Indra. Victoria?
Can you tell me, oh, did you say me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Could you tell me like a range of like, I don't know, maybe three or five types of businesses that you could think that have come out of this sort of a, so I guess maybe by asking that, maybe some, these types happen more in this sort of a space than these types, just like a general, what sort of businesses tend to come out of something like this?
That's a great question. That's very exciting, actually. I don't know if you all are aware of this, but this is like the age of entrepreneurship, so through the industrial age, we're emerging into a new space. I'll give you a couple stories. Joey's Hot Sauce is a good example. On a scale up, Joey approached us. We helped Joey navigate, find some resources and manufacturing space. So he went from just selling local, he's now in 10 Safeway stores. So we facilitated that through our partners, through the state of Oregon. We have OEN, we have a lot of resources. We also have a few new prototypes. We just had a young person with something called Plant Pearls. It's a product, a sublingual product for health. We just moved him forward. So I would say that we're seeing entrepreneurs on all realms. I will add to this that the reason for this space is that through Business Oregon, we focus on science and technology. And as we're familiar with our landscape here in Grants Pass, we have a wide variety, diversity in our entrepreneurs. We have food and beverage, cottage industry, retail, hospitality, services. And so this space would be able to open up and serve those. And I see a lot of, I see everything you can think of. Today, we had someone present on a locally-made lotion, a feeling company, so it's all over the place. It's very cool. Welcome.
Indra?
How is the Innovation Center funded? So do people pay to go do that, or are there grants? How, what's the revenue source?
So at this space, primarily in my work this last year as Innovation Hub Director, I noticed there was really a gap with food and beverage, just not a lot of support. So part of the space is having that kitchen to support food and beverage. And so there would be kitchen use, classes, workshops. I'm very passionate about nutrition and nutrition for our youth. I would love to partner with other organizations to utilize the space. And so generate, incubator be generated by that, and then I do have grant funding, hopefully down the future that will sustain it.
Further questions? We've got Rob and Eric, and then Kathleen.
Yeah, a few questions. There's a, I guess, a pretty extensive list of partners. Can you tell us what the level of investment or revenue or resource sharing is coming from those partners?
So I understand, are you asking if they directly contribute to the space?
Well, they're called partners, and in business, usually partners most often bring financial help. So what are these partners, are these partners providing any resources?
I would say that through a few of the, oh, Dana, thank you, through the partners, there are grant opportunities, there could be mentorship. They're gonna partner in very different ways. They're gonna bring different things from each partner, and none would be the same. SO Ready's been very supportive. We have an entrepreneurship fund for entrepreneurs, so I would say I couldn't answer that directly with these partners. So some of them would provide educational opportunities. Kaufman Foundation could be a potential funder. Startup Champion Networks is at national level. So partnership with Main Street Visit GP would be maybe offering technical assistance and programs for the community that would all be free.
Thank you. So you were in the news, I guess, last week. You probably saw the story. And I don't know if other people, if all the counselors have seen the story, but apparently SO Ready has been awarded, and I'm just reading from the news story, SO Ready receives $400,000 state grant to power Southern Oregon Innovation Hub. Southern Oregon Regional, or SO Ready has been awarded Innovation Hub. The, it fuels entrepreneurship, innovation across just men and Jackson counties, offering startups, founders, access to technical assistance, mentorship, et cetera. And I don't, you know, sometimes I know the media gets things wrong, but I guess you were quoted as saying that this bold investment from Business Oregon supercharges Southern Oregon entrepreneurial ecosystem and fuels innovation across the state. So I'm just wondering, it seems as though this area specifically just got a $400,000 grant from the state for what it sounds like the exact thing that you're recommending. So I'm just wondering why with SO Ready, apparently, maybe it's SO Ready having what I would call be deep pockets on this, and they're listed as a partner, why wouldn't they be helping financially?
Let me provide some clarification. The money that comes down from the hubs is part of Business Oregon's 10-year innovation plan, is quite a lofty plan. So that funding comes down from Business Oregon. It's not a direct contribution to SO Ready. SO Ready is a fiscal manager of the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub. There are 10 hubs currently in the state of Oregon. We are each funded. We are pro, we are actual projects. We're usually housed under economic development agencies. So SO Ready, while, you know, the funding does say that goes to SO Ready, it is just a, kind of a pass-through. As the director, I work with Business Oregon on the distribution of funds. I did wanna clarify something that I think is important, maybe you all appreciate. The funding is critical, but what I have found with Business Oregon and not discounting them, because I think this is an incredible vision to help our state with innovation and help our economy, which is needed, but it's restricted to support just staffing and programming. And what I found in this time doing this work is, we serve traded sector, innovation-based businesses primarily in technology and science, which has been a challenge in our region. That is more, I would say, more Portland, more metro. And so I'm limited in the entrepreneurs that I can help through this work. Through this funding, it does not support a physical space. It provides support, technical assistance, as you read, for high-growth, scalable companies. So if you know anything about entrepreneurship and business startup, a lot of our folks aren't there. But I feel like they need an equal opportunity to get there. And that's where I, why my passion is around that incubator system that I ran when I was in California, something very similar. The investment is just available for a pipeline of tech and science-driven startups, but it does not cover the broader needs of our community. There's no support for physical space, no resources for industries outside of technology and science, as I mentioned, even ag and value-added products and service-based businesses. So without that shared space, I can't reach as many people as I'd like to reach. And there's a statistic, I have a lot of statistics, but I'm not sure, again, if you're aware, but when you increase even just 1% of entrepreneurial activity in your community, you decrease on poverty by 2%. So the impact of this work, the ecosystem work, if you're not familiar with it, is powerful, because at the heart of economic development and community is entrepreneurs. And I know some of you are business owners. So that's what I'm passionate about, the need for a space, community connection, community-driven. It's not my space. It's a space for the community.
So you're saying, then, that this, as far as partnership with SO Ready on this particular, this particular project, financially, they're basically gonna offer nothing?
No, that is not.
I didn't, well, I heard you say that the money came down, but somehow SO Ready can't find a way to get it to you for this project.
No, this project is separate. The reason is that, this is something actually I want to do. This is something that I want to initiate, and I really like it here. I want to see Grants Pass be a leader. So I have a personal investment in this. This is something that I would like to do on my own, in collaboration with the city. I want to bring this to Grants Pass. I would like us to be at the forefront of innovation. I would like to be on the map, so that's where this is. I haven't asked SO Ready to do that, but this isn't really a project that SO Ready could directly fund. And, you know, they're, I don't, I can't speak to that, but this is something I chose to do on my own to bring to our community, as it's not related to SO Ready's work. They've been very supportive of me in this effort, but they are not directly supporting it in that manner.
Do you mind if I add? Just what you have noted here is that your, the salary for the program director would be paid through the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub, which is being administered through SO Ready. So I think they are showing some support there.
Yeah.
I have other questions, but if other counselors want to jump in, that's fine.
Okay, so I got Eric. Okay, how about Joel, then?
So with that $400,000 from SO Ready, when you have your estimated two-year startup budget, I don't see that accounted for anywhere in the budget. I do see your salary being paid, or I assume it's your salary. And I don't know, that leads me to ask the question on your other partners, what are they contributing, you know, and is it monetary? Are we paying for duplicate things? It just, there's just an array of questions there that are unclear in your application, that I feel really uneasy tonight approving your request, given what little I know, and I value what you're doing, because it's needed. But when I see a documentation, you got $400,000, it's not in your budget, and you're requesting the, basically over 50% of your startup cost to the citizens of Grants Pass, not considering that, I don't know why.
May I answer the best that I can?
Sure.
I would like to take, this is really hard to explain. I would like to just, if we can, take that, the Southern Innovation Hub is a Southern Oregon Innovation Hub. It's a certain body of work that I happen to be the director of. Most of the hubs, I would say, all of the hubs in the state have a physical location. They're different than I. I do not have a physical location for my hub work. It's really done digital or in my car or random coffee shops, as you all see me driving around. This project is not the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub, and I'll tell you a couple things. This project is me, Dr. Kim Frees, as Seed Collective Catalyst, not for any other reason than I want to bring a space to the downtown region based on the needs assessments and data that I collected this last year, addressing that need for this. So if you could think of it as, the hub work is a hub work. I'll continue to do that work. When we got these grants, the need for space was very evident for us in our region because we are the only one that doesn't have a physical space. So the bonus is that you get me, I'm paid for, it's okay with Business Oregon. That's the only piece that is that, that grant. That's it. So if you can kind of shift that to the side, that's a very, not super-related to this. This space is something that I would like to start up, to support my community. So it's two, two different things. The $400,000 funding is over two years, which really isn't a lot with staffing and some programming, but it's very highly mandated by Business Oregon. So while I can do that work, I would like to also do the work to address the greater needs of my community.
I got Kathleen?
So I see a part of your partnership is One Million Cups, and I think that's sort of a similar thing where entrepreneurs are already gathering and talking about their projects. So how is that going to influence the hub, and how is that going to work together? Or are these people coming out of things that you're already doing?
So it's pretty much me recruiting entrepreneurs all over that two counties, getting them. So that, the One Million Cups is a space for entrepreneurs to tell their story, backed by Kaufman Foundation, very large philanthropy that's been around for a very long time in Kansas City. So what happens is they present, and some of you have been there, so thank you, at the One Million Cups. But what happens is they present and they tell their stories, and then we give Q and A, and we find resources and that. We ask how we can help as a community. But that's where it ends. You know, sometimes they need more. They need mentorship. We just launched, I call it the OG Mentorship, with a rotary is going to take on mentoring. But they need so many other things. So while they have a place to stand on station, tell their story, what comes next? There's so many things, capital access, you know, marketing, you know, all kinds of things, navigation. Maybe they need to be referred to SPDC, or maybe they need to go to RCC. But it's just that first beginning step. So the need for the space, one is, I think it will be a great addition to our downtown region. It will support all businesses, not just downtown. But it will actually allow us to take those entrepreneurs and help them move to the next step. So whether that means a new product or a new business, maybe it's somebody moving into one of the empty spaces that we have in their town. But right now, when they present, we give them resources, but that's, that's where it ends. So the incubator space, when the question came about incubator, that's to bring them in and get them to that space where we can help them launch and grow their business. But, so thank you for that.
Can I just have a follow-up question? So it looks like you need financing to get equipment, a kitchen, photography supplies. So is that what you're seeing, that people lack the supplies to?
Correct.
Go to the next level?
Yeah, so these, the request is actually very specific. And as Dana shared, I've done this work for a really long time. And so there are certain things that I call them friction or pain points for entrepreneurs. So the goal is, it's really not a large ask, given that this is a complete incubator. I've worked in incubators that were half a million dollars to be loaded up with all the fancy equipment. It's not so much a maker space, but it is a business building space. So the things that are identified here are a kitchen to help with testing, prototyping, new products. Oregon Department of Agriculture is super supportive of this project. But a space to get the folks, the things that they need to get moving forward. And that's where the space is, Dana, for the mentorship here. I do a lot of ideation, a lot of education, so, so thank you for that.
I got Victoria.
So in, I know that I have heard from many people in the community of the need for a commercial kitchen. This sort, this commercial kitchen, would it be rentable for new entrepreneurs?
Yeah, absolutely. It would be, again, this is community project, and I can't, sometimes you don't know when you start something like this because it's really community need and driven. So yes, it would be available. And that, you know, that is another thing, that is, as you shared, so needed to have that space. Or even just that address, some of the needs of the food and beverage community are great. So yes, it would be accessible by everyone.
Okay, I got Seth, Rob, and then Indra. So Seth?
Yeah, Dana or Brad, I don't know who's. Can you give us a little bit more background on the LB6344? I mean, this money is set aside specifically for this purpose, correct?
Yes, that's, that's what the project's for. And let me see if I can find this slide that I, the direction that's given in, this is the direction that we basically have related to that project. There is a little more detail that talks about the types of activities that could happen there. It includes things like a commercial kitchen space. You know, I don't have it directly in front of me, but, but it, the direction within that project is fairly limited. It really is more about, it does specifically state that it's a business incubator and that it would be to support startups. And then also, the initial project was really focused on providing the startup equipment or other needs for the startup portion of it. So it is really very much targeted at the work that is being done in the requests here.
And I have a question for you, Kim. If this doesn't get voted through, what's, what's next for you? I mean, I will say that I'm fully in support of it.
Thank you.
And I would say that, you know, I spend a lot of my time in the entrepreneurial community, and this is not new news, this topic, this idea, and it's supported across the board in all these groups and within these partners.
Thank you very much. So your question to me was, what happens if this isn't funded?
What's your, what's your next move? Are you going to try again here, or are you going to leave?
Probably leave. So this project is really a hot topic, and I will tell you something. This has a second part to this. This is really about building a self-sustainable ecosystem. The second piece is something a little more lofty, I'm going to share it, is to create a co-packing facility that's food-grade certified. Another great need, we have very few co-packing facilities in our state. We are like a desert down here as far as resources for entrepreneurs. So the reason that I chose Grants Pass is one, I live here, I love the community. But I would like to start the kitchen and then also later include a co-packing facility. So that's a greater plan, not to get in the weeds. But I do have four other communities anxious for me to bring this project to them. But I prefer that this project stays in Grants Pass. That's why I'm here tonight.
Rob, and then Indra, and then Eric. Rob?
Yeah, you may have, I guess, maybe answered what my question was going to be. But, you know, and I look at, you know, in the packet, core focus sectors, tech and innovation, textiles and apparel, art and design, food and beverage, innovative products, startup businesses. So you've got a list of basically six, you know, or more different sectors there. And yet, I'm not sure, when you've got your, your operating budget, for your second year on the operating budget, it seems as though everything is focused on the food sector. So it's almost like you've decided, or it seems like, you're projecting that that's where the focus is, that the others are not going to need any more help or something in the second year. But how did you decide where this, because you, you know, you seem to say that you were trying to respond to community demand. How do you know what this is going to need in year two, it's already in your budget, to expand the kitchen?
So for entrepreneurs, a lot of what they need, so the reason the kitchen is important is, I'm a clinical psychologist. I'm very passionate about nutrition, as I shared, and food. And I think that that cultivates community. So the kitchen isn't just there for that, it is really to create a culture within the space and provide greater opportunities. When we work with, I work with entrepreneurs, the greatest equipment for food and beverage is that commercial kitchen. That's a coveted need to test their products, to move anything forward. It's needed to go from cottage industry, to move forward, to move forward to, just like I shared with Joey, without a commercial kitchen, he wouldn't move forward. It isn't that I am choosing to focus solely on food and beverage. The kitchen is an integral part to the whole system. The entrepreneurs' majority that I work with right now, because of Business Oregon's requirements, they don't need a lot of fancy equipment. So there would be no one turned away, everyone would be served. Because a lot of times, some of the entrepreneurs, gosh, I've worked with so many, you know, like they don't need a lot of, they don't need the lasers. And if you're familiar with maker spaces, they don't need all the fancy equipment. And that's when you ask me about my partners. I refer a lot of my entrepreneurs, I had someone who created a prototype. One of my entrepreneurs went to business in Bend, Oregon. I work with them, I help incubate them, but then it moves past where I can help them. So I refer them to RCC, and they built out the rest of their prototype to present. So it works in tandem with all of our partners. So I would serve everyone. That kitchen is just a niche area that is very unique for the food and beverage. They can't do anything without that, but it would not, it would be very inclusive in the space and serve all entrepreneurs' needs. You're welcome.
I got Indra, and then Eric, and then Joel. Indra?
You mentioned that most innovation hubs are under the Economic Development Department of cities. So are they financial, would you expect more financial help down the road? Or this is a one-time thing for the kitchen? What if something broke? Or you, you know, you needed to fix. Kitchens can be very expensive in a few years. So is that what you envision? You would be under economic development eventually and require a budget for that?
Yeah, I, I would hope so. I, there is some funding hopefully coming down the pipeline, which is why I'm in this project for food and beverage, I'm hoping from the state level. So the idea is that once we get this space started, that there will be additional supportive funds. So just, it's really hard to find funding for the, the hard cost for the equipment. That's really challenging. But there are supportive partners, I didn't mention RV, FSN, it's a Rogue Valley Food Network system. They're great proponents. So yeah, I like that question, but I think that down the road, there will be additional support once we gain some traction to help keep this going. Yeah, thank you, Indra.
Yes, and I have a question for Dana. So we determined early in this conversation that it was city money. So I understand that it's been designated for that, but is that money available to move to another, like, public safety or somewhere else in our budget?
I think that's a JC question.
Yeah, since it came from the URA, probably should go either back to the URA or remain in a URA purpose and not directly to something like general fund like public safety.
So you said should go back. Does that mean it has to, or it doesn't have to?
Well, we talk about amending the URA plan a lot. And so I would, per a consultant that we had come in about a year ago, she recommended that we keep funds there until we actually make a plan change and then start to move those around accordingly, if you have some different ideas as far as what, what the project should be and the funding, where it should be going. So I would recommend if you don't have a plan, and you're not going to necessarily use it right now for a URA purpose that is defined in the current plan, to just keep it there until you make an amendment to that plan.
So let me ask directly, is that money available to move to public safety if the council decided we wanted to do that?
I do not believe so.
I got Eric, and then Joel. Eric?
That's a very interesting question. I actually wanted to ask the same thing. But, okay, so the Rogue Community College, you mentioned that you partnered with, with them. And is there a way, maybe you can step that partnership up? And maybe just, since if they have a lot of, maybe they do, maybe they don't have a lot of that stuff already in place, would that be an option for you, to be able to partner with them and step up that partnership? Maybe and make that your headquarters type of thing, I guess, if they're willing to do that?
No.
Can you expand on that?
I can expand on that, I'd be happy to. I teach still for RCC. When I moved up here, I was a dean with RCC. They actually hired me in part to run the Innovation Hub, and, you know, things happened, and that didn't happen. Here's the deal with higher ed. When we talk about serving all populations, not everyone wants to go to a college. For one, they don't have the space. They don't have a commercial kitchen. And that's not an area of programming that they'd like to expand in. So the reason that I choose to do this the way that I am is not discounting RCC because some of my entrepreneurs do need to go there, and I, I think that's great. Here's the thing, it's a very difficult, it moves very slow, higher ed moves slow. And sometimes the needs of the entrepreneurs are so great and very specific. We also do not have an entrepreneurship really program at RCC. So I would, again, I tried to do this when I was the dean, it was very difficult, and it was not within, you know, everything has its governance, so it just wasn't something I would do. Although, they just support me, I'm still a staff. But this work that I need to do needs to be more grassroots within our community, with me there, to be able to be accessible and move the entrepreneurs at the speed they need to move. I used to work with, I used to be a construction worker, I had a company, I had 23 different businesses. And I laughed when I would go out and talk to our industry partners, say, hey, do you want to partner? And, you know, go in on the certificate, let me get some people trained up. And you know what they always said? The education moves way too slow for industry and the workforce. I got told that a lot. So not discounting that, but I can move things a little bit quicker and a little more specific and localized.
Okay, I got Joel, and then Victoria. Joel?
So doctor, I appreciate you coming today, and I appreciate you coming to request money from us because it's, it's for the purpose from which you talk about. You help other businesses start, so I assume you have a business plan?
Oh, you mean for the facility?
For, for your hub, you have a business plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and does it include the incomes and the expense cost centers that you have? That when you went to a bank and asked for money, you would lay that out for them and tell them where the money's coming from? And everything. Can we have a copy of that?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate.
Yeah, it's going to look a little bit different in that part of this is just me self-funded. So once I can get the equipment in the space, it's going to look a little bit different. I'm a bootstrapper, so if you're familiar with that term. I do a lot of these things, I'm pretty crafty, but I will bring that to you. It'll look a little bit different than you're used to because there's going to be no funding, no lending of that sort. It's going to be bootstrapped and kind of grassroots, but I would love to maybe have a shout-out with y'all.
I know, when we were running our medical office, a business plan was invaluable.
It is invaluable, right?
And you, you don't, it's a good communication tool to, for this type of discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joel. I got Victoria, and then Rob. Victoria?
Well, I really like the idea, and one of our goals was to support the creation of business in Grants Pass. And I like the idea of the commercial kitchen, just because I know it's needed. People have come to me and said, we, we need another commercial kitchen at Grants Pass. But if you could tell me with this, once it's up and running, how, or maybe in the process too, how many, how many businesses do you, do you think could be created in the first, like, year, let's say? So how many entrepreneurs would, would you create or help to create in one year? So maybe to help people visualize how this would, and most of those people, I'm also assuming, stay local with their business until they scale up. But, and so what that would look like for the community?
That's a great question. Over, when we had 10 months with the last hub, we, through variations of what we offered, we connected with about 1,700 people, which I think is astronomical. Out of that, we formed ecosystem partners. But out of the entrepreneurs, I say that we could expect, because I have a lot of, I think of like boats on the harbor, I have a lot of entrepreneurial boats on the harbor that are just waiting. But I say that we could expect probably at least 30, 40 startups. And then I think there are a few scale-ups. Joey's Hot Sauce would like to locate here and manufacture and have Joey's Hot Sauce be a Grants Pass product. So you're going to see, and to answer your question, it could be upwards to 50 if there's a variety of different entrepreneurs that are already in existence but scaling and want to be in our, you know, in our community, growing. So I think that'd be a reasonable, no, don't hold me to that, but I think that's reasonable. You're welcome.
So I got Rob?
Yeah, JC, getting back to the reallocation of funds. So if this money were to go back to the URA, could that be used for things like upgrade on the Hillcrest Fire Station and things like that, since that's in the URA? And there's, what other projects could it be used for, if it would impact the URA, that would be potentially public safety-related? Like Hillcrest Fire Station for one.
Yeah, I'm guessing Dana would be a better person to answer the question, but there are 17 different projects laid out in the current URA plan. And like you mentioned, I'm guessing there's some infrastructure in. And like you mentioned, I'm guessing there's some infrastructure in there that could go towards public safety, but not necessarily straight towards public safety as far as FTE.
So but, but as far as you know, there's no prohibition of essentially reallocating these funds to use for something like, in other words, if we went through the proper steps to go through modifications or remodel, whatever, towards something like the Hillcrest Fire Station?
That is correct, and Brad can add on too, and I think that's how the pool made it onto the list as well.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, the Oregon revised statute is very specific about urban renewal money when it comes to public facilities. Recreation facilities are treated very differently than public safety ones. So you do have to go back to all of the taxing entities that are impacted by the urban renewal. And you have to get at least four of them to agree to that change.
Which we, which we've done before.
We have not done that.
Oh, we didn't do that with the pool when we, when we extended it to the pool?
With recreation facilities, that's not needed.
Okay, so we basically have to jump through some hoops to get, to be able to use it for Hillcrest Fire Station or some other similar project?
Yeah, it would, it would be a substantial amendment. You have only done minor amendments so far.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if we have any more questions, but we are at 8:58. So I would be looking for a motion from council to continue. Kathleen?
I make a motion to continue past nine o'clock.
And second from Victoria, and quick roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none.
Yes.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you all.
And at this moment in time, we open it up for public comment in regards to this topic. So if anybody from the community wants to come up and give comment in regards to this council action, please step up.
Ken Hadama, 40-year business guy. Auto parts owner at age 19. I do property development, mini storages, commercial rentals, fire suppression for the Forest Service, logging, dump trucks, you name it. Entrepreneurs, don't go to these people. The vast majority do not. I know of nobody personally and birds of a feather flock together. This is a waste of taxpayer money. We're looking at a tax increase on water rates, which will affect me. We're looking at an increase on safety. That's going to be paid by tax dollars and every dollar comes from business ultimately, every single dollar. And then we're looking at the big increase with COTAC, which I'd like clarification on that. My understanding is a letter was from the city supporting that. Is that true or is that not true? Does anybody have an answer on that?
Comment section.
I'm just curious if that's true because who authorized that? They didn't speak for me. Did anybody run it by the public? Just curious. But going back to this, no, not supportive of it. I know of no business guy that comes from this type of background. I know of no business guy that's ever, would even talk about this. And real dollars don't come from lotions and whatnot. We need industry in this area, heavy industry. That's where real tax dollars came, come from. If you look back in the heyday of the logging years, the 60s, 70s, that's where the real dollars were at. Needs to be something like that.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
So I'm a retired, I'm Valerie, I'm the ice cream lady. I'm a retired restaurant owner and I owned 12 restaurants from the time that I started in my own business when I was 18 years old. And all the numbers are up there, there is no way that that would have been a successful business. I had built 12 restaurants by myself, well, with my husband. And there's no common sense in it. And I just couldn't make, I couldn't put, put the numbers together and make success out of it. I was just like, there's no way, there's no way. This is, would be their first business that they ever even started, a restaurant business. So in my mind, it's just a waste of money. It's just, would be a pit. That's my opinion. I do want to talk about my ice cream later.
Thank you. Comments, public comments in regards to this topic? We'll have general public comment later.
Dell Aldridge, City Grants Pass, that's ridiculous. I, I, I have a restaurant. We looked at putting a hood up. That was $80,000 just for one hood. So this is really a waste of money.
Thank you. Any further public comment in regards to this topic? Go ahead.
Rika Brown. I have a daughter who is the most amazing cook. But she doesn't have a commercial kitchen to scale up. And she's been asked to do this by a, a, you know, fairly wealthy friend of hers, but she needs to get some education on it, on how to do this. And I think this is not, this is a fine idea actually. And the URA money is not kept for public safety, for the water plant. They have their own sources. And, but the, the URA money is for helping business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment in regards to this topic? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Seth?
I don't really know where to begin on this topic. I, the comments of waste of taxpayer money to me is just insane. You can have your opinion, that's fine. I don't disagree that we need industry, 100%. This is, this is a topic that I'm passionate about because I'm heavily involved in it. But we're, we're trying to grow businesses in Grants Pass alone, this valley alone. And a lot of them are small businesses, right? Downtown, all throughout town, we have small business owners up here. I'm a small business owner. And like I said, I'm heavily involved in groups all over town, in the valley, that fully support these things. So to, to come out and say that it's a waste is, is really not true. You really need to get down to what's out there and what these people on the ground think. And so I think too, you know, for the people that ran and got elected on the topics that they got elected on, and one of them was business and business growth, this is a perfect opportunity. This is what we need. And again, if we don't do it now, it's going to go somewhere else. It's going to go to Medford, it'll go to Ashland, and we won't have it. And like I said, go downtown right now. There's so many local restaurant owners, small business owners, startups. So to me, it's, it's not a waste, you know? This money's already set aside. I remember back in 2018 when this was a discussion and it got squashed because of COVID. I also think that it's great that Kim is doing it. I don't agree that RCC should take it on. I think they have a purpose, but I think that they will, in, in some sense, stifle the innovation that we could have out of this. So I'm just going to make a motion to approve the resolution of the council of the City of Grants Pass awarding Seed Collective Catalyst LLC the grant of $80,000, $50,000 for the Grants Pass Nexus Incubator.
We've got a motion on the table with a second from Victoria. Any further discussion? Rob?
Yeah, I find it interesting when Seth says that he's a member of many groups that quote, "fully support these things." I'm asking like, who actually supports this thing with actual money? You know, we, we don't have an answer. I, I can't believe that with Soretti or through Soretti, they get a $400,000 grant. And we pay, we pay dues to Soretti every year. And I can't believe we got a $400,000 grant or, or very close to hitting this project, but somehow there's no way to, to hit the bullseye. And then all these other partners, to me, this is a feel-good project with lots of partners who, who pay a lot of lip service, quite frankly, and they're asking us to foot the bill. And, you know, the fact that we could, we, we know that we've got swimming pool costs that we want to fund and that's already in the URA, no problem there. So, you know, we'd have no problem using the money there if we needed to. I just, you know, when I look at the budget for this thing, when I first looked at the budget, it, to me, it looked like the budget of someone who was wanting to start a cafe and, you know, hoping to do a little cafe. You know, the second year stuff with co-dining and seating, outdoor pop event gear and food cart. Fifth, over, over $50,000 of the 80,000 is for food stuff. And it's, you know, now we've got seating in year two. To me, this looked like someone who was trying to start a, a cafe. And supposedly there's a lot of partners, but again, I'd like to see any of these partners. And the most disappointing thing, I, I just, it blows me away that there's no way for a really intelligent group of people in Southern Oregon to find a way to use this, you know, biz, the, what is it called? Business Oregon, the Business Oregon money that went to Soretti. It just, it's, it boggles my mind. So to me, there's other ways we can use this money, whether it's a swimming pool, whether it's Hillcrest Fire Station after we jumped through some hoops. And again, we hear all about the, the partners. I, I'd like to see any partner that actually willing, is willing to put any, any finances into this thing because I, I haven't heard of any. And I, I just don't think that this is, I just don't think it's a great use of the money. I, I don't see us necessarily filling up empty storefronts here. And we could, I know we did hear about a hot sauce company. It would have been great to hear about a dozen more, you know, ultra-successes. We didn't hear of any other than a hot sauce company. But, and there may be more out there, but I would have loved to have had a better picture or, or more upside potential demonstrated. But with a lot of time at the mic, we didn't, didn't, I didn't hear any.
Any further discussion? Seth? And then Victoria and then Indra. Seth?
I just want to say that I, I don't know anywhere that a partner fully means financial backer. Even in business, that's not any, partnership can mean many things. And second, you know, the grant, I understand your concern, but it's no different than the grant that we just spent two hours talking about. I mean, each grant has their own requirement. It's no different than the requirements that the Main Street Grant had when it got awarded. So, you know, unfortunately, Business Oregon is going to prefer tech companies and things like that, which Kim spoke to. We don't have a lot around here. That's a Bend, that's a Portland. Those are bigger cities, so.
Victoria and then Indra. Victoria?
I just see this as the beginning of a lot of small business startups and we need them. And I think we need this space, so I don't see it as a waste of money. So I am in support of it because I like the idea of 50 small business ideas. And even if only a third of those actually were created out of it, it would be worth it.
Indra?
It, it sounds really good and I, I like the idea. I'm a small business owner. I actually went once to the Portland Innovation Hub. It wasn't something I could continue with. It was like way over. I, so I, I, that was my one and only time doing that. It'd be great to think that we could create a lot of business and, and we probably would a few. We just, I guess, when I heard the pool, we had hundreds of people in here wanting the pool and writing to us. And, and so we spend a lot of money up here. Every, every meeting, we spend taxpayer money, whether it's rate increases or grants or whatever. And I'm just, we've got to be frugal with our money. I don't want to be a person on the council that bankrupts our city because we've spent all our money. We, we're drawing down our reserves and we just had money out like, like candy. And so I don't want to do that. And so I, that's where I'm at right now. While I think it would be worthwhile to do if we had the funds, but we don't. The, the Hillcrest Fire Station is dying for renovation. The pool is falling apart. I mean, we have all these projects that I think the community wants, takes priority over something like this. So I'm going to be a no on that.
Any further discussion? Kathleen?
Well, I'm just wondering if we could table this to a workshop?
You have a current motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a current motion on the table to approve the resolution for the City of Grants Pass to award the Seed Collective Catalyst LLC, the grant for the Grants Pass Nexus Incubator. We have a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll go into a roll call vote. Indra? Oh, did you want to, sorry, go ahead, Seth.
So I just, I'm just curious, if this gets voted down, is this just dead in the water? Or can this go to a workshop?
You have a motion on the table to award this grant. If that does go down, then it would go down.
I mean, if, if, if people would prefer this to go to a workshop, then I'd prefer that. If, if that's all you need is more information, then I'm okay with that if it's going to be a no.
Okay, then what you would have to do is rescind your motion and, or amend your motion to be completely different?
I mean, I don't want to, but I will. I'll amend it to, yeah. I mean, I will, we'll go to a workshop if that's, if that's what it's going to take.
Okay, so procedural wise, does he have to pull the, pull amend it or, or motion or just amend it?
Well, if you're going to amend the motion, then you need to have the second approve that.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the, the motion now on the table is that you afford this to a future workshop for further discussion.
Okay, so Seth has amended the motion to push this to, for further discussion in a workshop. And second has approved that, so any further discussion in that? Yes? Indra?
Yeah, I think I would be willing to not let it die and maybe talk about it more. I don't know.
Seth?
Please attend some of these meetings. That's all I can say. One million cups, whatever you have to do to get involved and learn.
Any further discussion? All right, we have, Eric?
I think Joel brought up a good point. I think we, the workshop would be, would be good. We need a business plan. We need something that shows more information.
Okay, for, any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to push this to a workshop for further discussion. Joel?
Well, and I'd like to know too, and I know you did your best, doctor, on explaining the relationship with the other grant, but it was somewhat still confusing to me. And to approve this without that, I think would be negligent on my part without having additional information.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the table to push this to discuss further at upcoming workshop. And I'll go into a vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Indra?
Yes.
All right, motion passes to prolong this to a upcoming workshop. And there has been a request for some additional information. Do you have clear direction? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Now, next on the agenda is appointments. We have, we have one appointment for the Historical Buildings and Sites Commission. We have one applicant, so I would bring it to council for an easy motion? Yep, there's only one applicant, so.
Just, just a note here, Rick left me his signed copies. I don't know if there's a, if that's going to be a problem or not, but he wanted me to turn that in for his vote.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think since there's only one applicant, we could probably go directly into a motion unless you guys wanted to discuss beforehand. Rob?
Yeah, I want, I wanted to discuss the applicant.
Sure.
But first, before I discuss the applicant, I want to say that, you know, typically for years, it was the policy, of course, that we had three applicants for any position that we were going to appoint. I think that's been modified slightly because there's less applicants as the years have gone on. But I want to say that on this particular commission, and Joel could either verify or correct me, but the Historic Buildings and Sites Commission, you know, they have hearings and so forth for external projects that enable businesses to move forward to do their, to complete projects and so forth. At no time that I can remember has Historic Buildings and Sites Commission ever not had a meeting due to lack of a quorum. So they always have enough people. There's no urgent need to fill this position to keep our processes or our businesses going because they, they never, you know, they always have a quorum. And they have, they're probably one of the most consistent committees or commissions in that regard. So with that, talking about the
So, with that, talking about the applicant the other day, I didn't get a sense that she had a lot of, a great deal of knowledge, or even particular interest in historic aspects of our downtown. It seemed like she had a little bit different motivation, and I applaud her willingness to want to get involved, and hopefully there's an outlet for that. But I don't think that Historic Buildings and Sites Commission is the right place for her particular energy. And again, that's not a commission that ever really misses a meeting, and nobody's projects are ever held up because they can't get a quorum. So, I'd, I'd like to re-advertise this to see if we can get some more applicants that may show a little bit more interest or knowledge or in that specific area of expertise.
Indra?
Yeah, I too have concerns. This is a really important appointment, and I think the person should have a clear understanding of what the commission does, a clear understanding of historical sites and buildings and history. And I did not get that from the candidate, that she really had a grasp on what the commission even did. So, I mean, at least do your research before you come to interview. And so, I would be for not selecting anyone tonight.
Any further discussion or action? So, you have the opportunity to say that you do not want to appoint a commission member at this time and reissue it? That could be a motion?
I would make a motion to not make an appointment tonight and reissue it.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Seth? All right, you have a motion on the table to not appoint this, not appoint a member to the Historical Buildings and Sites Commission and re-advertise. With a second, any further discussion? See in the, Joel? No? Okay, all right, we'll go into a vote. Victoria?
No.
Joel?
So, this is a little bit confusing on what yes and no means. So, yes, we advertise for more candidates?
Correct. Yes vote would be not to appoint a Historical Buildings and Sites Commission member tonight and reissue the advertisement.
Yes.
Okay? Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Seth?
Yes.
Joel, I mean, Rob?
Yes.
And Indra?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion passes to not appoint a member to this committee tonight and reissue the application process. All right, so moving on to the next appointment, one member, one member to the Public Safety Advisory Committee. You have one, two, three, four, five applicants in front of you, so I would mark your preferred applicants on the paper and sign it and send it forward, please. Joel didn't do the proper color. Should we disqualify him? Oh, oh, come on, guys. Okay, so take that one out. Okay, so, we have, four counselors would like Jordan Mortensen to go forward, and three counselors would like Harry Peterson to go forward. So, I would bring him back to council for discussion or a motion. Victoria?
I move to appoint Jordan Mortensen to the Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Okay, and there's a second by Eric. So, there is a motion on the table to appoint Jordan Mortensen to the Public Safety Advisory Committee. With a second, any further discussion? All right, we'll go into a vote. Indra?
No.
Sorry?
No.
Okay, thank you. I, sorry, I didn't hear you. Rob?
No.
Seth?
No.
Kathleen? Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
All right, so I got four yeses for Jordan Mortensen, and so, Jordan Mortensen will be appointed to the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Okay, at this time, the moment you all have been waiting for, sorry it's taken so long. Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not two individuals. At conclusion of this public comment, council will have the opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective, courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their position in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, and other personal attacks. No signs or placards, outbursts, or plows campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact city manager's office in an attempt to resolve this manner. And I'm going to hit the point. Public comment is addressed to the body of the council and not in the individual person or individual staff member. So, we have a number of here, and I'm going to go through the people I think are already gone. Mike Pelfrey's not here?
No.
Okay, Bob's already taken off?
Yeah.
Okay, Brian Weldon?
Yeah, Brian Weldon County. As I brought this up a couple of council meetings ago, I'm a member of Park Watch, and I'm also a member of the Fabulous 50's Car Show. We, the car owners, I have a letter here from the mayor, would really like our Fabulous 50 Car Show to leave the fairgrounds and come back to Riverside Park, the way they used to be many years ago, for quite a few years. Twenty-seven years in Riverside Park. We want that back. I really would like one person or more in the city government to come to our next meeting, September 21st at four o'clock, to the Frukdale Grange, and stand up and tell the board of the Fabulous 50's that you are in favor of coming back to Riverside Park. It's going to help a lot of small businesses at the park. Our car show is absolutely fabulous at the park. We have the most beautiful park in the entire state of Oregon, in my opinion, and that's what we want to try and do. So, the question I have is, Evergreen Federal has financed or donated to the monies for all of the events at Riverside Park. They have been outbid by another bank, so they cannot have anything to do with Riverside Park. I want to know why that happened from the City of Grants Pass and how we can reverse that, so Evergreen Federal can get back to the park. They do a lot of donations for this town. They also support Kids Fest that we put on at Riverside Park every year. So, they're very upset that they can't even fund our program next June, as well as the concerts and everything else. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Chief Hensman, for coming out to Baker Park.
Thank you. All right, I got, Ken?
I got a little more information earlier, which answered the question, and then Brian answered or asked, but I'm curious of why. Has it been standard protocol? Is the new bidder?
So, did you, are you, are you, still want to comment? You've still got two minutes, man. Come on up. You got an official card. Come on up. You're okay.
Ken Hadama, so I guess I'm wondering, my understanding is Evergreen can't be involved in donations or whatever to the park because another bank, which I believe may be Peoples, is, is that normal protocol? So, in other words, when Evergreen was sponsoring the park, could other banks not, or other entities not sponsor? Or did, or is this something new? Or is this just the normal protocol? So, if I can get an answer from somebody on that at some point, and if, go ahead if you can answer. Okay.
Not, not now, but what I, what I would advise you to do is grab a card back there, and then shoot us an email, and we'll get that answer for you.
Okay, I'm just curious what changed, or maybe nothing changed, but if it, it seems strange to me, if, if people are willing to step up businesses in this case, why cannot multiple businesses be involved in sponsoring the park? That's where I'm going with it. Seems a little strange.
Thank you, sir. All right, Valerie? Your turn.
Hi, hi, Mayor and City Council. I'm Valerie Blackwood. I live here in Grants Pass, Oregon, and I'm a street peddler. I'm the ice cream lady here since 2018. Having an ice cream woman is a great addition to the community for many reasons. I'm sorry. Because I'm reading this, I feel funny. I'm constantly on the lookout in the neighborhoods and parks for anything suspicious. I, because I raised eight kids and I have 13 grandkids, so I'm always like on the lookout. I'm a mobile service, which don't have to tell you, the cost of a DoorDash is a luxury. When people hear the music, it brings back nostalgia, and I have been asked and thanked by people to come by just so they can hear the music. I was invited to Riverside Park in 2019 and told that there was a pilot program and I'd be notified when it was going to end. So, I sold ice cream and treats since then. I was called and notified by mail that I can no longer sell ice cream in the parks. The program was over. I asked to be allowed to go through a couple more times and make sure the kids knew that I wasn't going to be there. And, but that was, I was warned that that could be a fine up to $700, so I didn't chance it. Since then, I've had kids asking me why I'm not at the park anymore. I just apologize and tell them that they didn't do anything wrong, and that, because the kids always blame themselves, so I just wanted them to know that. It breaks my heart to not to be able to be in the park the whole year, and, and to not be able to share the vision of a clean and safe Grants Pass Park community. When I envision thriving community parks, I see kids playing in clean and safe areas with me driving through and watching the kids dance and bringing them joy. If you share in this opinion, would you please consider changing the rules?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rika Brown?
Hunga Tonga is an underwater volcano in the South Pacific next to the island Republic of Tonga. It was 450 feet underwater when it started to erupt December 8th, 2021. It built a cinder cone that reared up over the waves. January 15th, 2022, it blew its top 450 feet underwater. It scattered the cinders as it threw 150 million tons of seawater up through the troposphere, the stratosphere, and punched the mesosphere, touching space, and leaving a visible hump that is on the NASA website. Search NASA Hunga Tonga. That water in the stratosphere has been slowly falling into the air where weather is made, which was first noticed on our west coast in September of 2022, causing flooding and mudslides in California, according to the Los Angeles Times. December 31st, 2022 is when Wikipedia says it started flooding California. It continued through spring 2023. Wikipedia blames it all on climate change, though it mentions some unnamed scientists saying it could have other causes. It doesn't mention the underwater volcano that spent, sent 150 million tons of seawater into the stratosphere, a nameless one-day wonder on the evening news, a bit of video showing the blast expanding as it neared the satellite directly below, above it. It will be affecting our weather for at least another two years or more.
Thank you, Rika.
You're welcome.
Michael Servant?
Thank you, Mike Servant, city resident. I'm here tonight to continue to bring awareness to the fact that the city has established homeless camps in the downtown area that are blatantly in violation of the city's municipal codes for chronic nuisance properties. The city's position is that these camps are immune from the municipal code because they claim that it's public property, and they can't control who goes on there or what activities occur on those properties. But frankly, this is an indefensible position, and removes any chance of recourse for any citizens who are affected by this. I would encourage the city council and the staff to educate themselves about a couple of recent court cases that were relevant to this. One is Brown versus the City of Phoenix, Arizona, and the other is, excuse me, Hedrick Acres Neighborhood Association versus the City of Tucson. In both of those cases, residents successfully sued the city for allowing a chronic nuisance property to occur regarding a homeless camp, and they were forced to pay pretty extensive legal fees when they were found to be not taking care of their nuisance properties. They found that municipalities are, in fact, as responsible as personal property owners to maintain not having a personal, a chronic nuisance property. So, it is incumbent upon the city to do what is right and legal in managing their own properties. This could be, this could be done by either the police department, the city could hire some sort of private security, or, you know, could partner with some kind of nonprofit to help manage the situation. Again, as I said earlier, you are requiring 24/7 management of the grant application project. So, you understand the problem with it is, and you just refuse to do anything about it. The reality is, we are subjected to a constant violations of noise, dogs, trespassing, and we have no recourse to do anything about it. We respect and appreciate that the police do come, but these are transitory offenses, and they're not able to do much about most of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dell?
Dell Aldrich, City of Grants Pass. I want to thank everybody for the tremendous job you guys are doing, but we need to step it up a lot more. Right now, the parks, we don't have them cleaned. There's people sleeping in every single park. We walk through and documented it almost every single night. There's people camping under the Sixth Street Bridge on the other side, and the other, both sides. Nobody's walking through. We called in one the other night because a guy was beating up on somebody. I don't understand. Why is there people still in the parks? Why are there people laying in the middle of the street, or down on a sidewalk, passed out? We walk up, wake them up, they walk away. They're stone out of their mind. They should be in a recovery center, or at least taken to the sobering center. Why do they get to walk away? If you're drunk in public, you get arrested. Why don't you get arrested for drugs? For being on toxic drugs? Now, the, one of the guys in the park has been sleeping there for days in the upper gazebo, every day, sleeping bag on everything. And the public doesn't know this because they don't get into our page, but someone died of an overdose in the lower gazebo, in Riverside Park, 100 feet from a playground. Why isn't that front new, no, front-page news around here? Because your, people are hiding it. The drug problem is out of control. Chief, you're doing the best you can, but we need to do more. We need to do more to get this town under control. I have friends leaving this town because they said they're tired of the parks being destroyed, and they're still being destroyed. We have a cleanup this week at Riverside Park, at River Redwood Park, I'm sorry. We haven't been there in over a year, so we figured it's time to go over there and support some of their asking us on the page, because they see car campers there on a regular basis, trash around them. They're picking up behind it, but they asked us to come down, and we're going to clean it up this week. Please do some. it up this week. Please do something. The shopping carts, that's another bother me. See someone walking down the street with a shopping cart? It's not theirs. They should be ticketed and made to take it back right then. I know your resources are low. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our portion of the night for general public comment. Thank you very much for your participation. At this time, we're going into the consent agenda. Can we get that up on the screen? All right, I would bring it to council for discussion or action in regards to the consent agenda. Would be looking for action from the council in regards to the consent agenda. Victoria?
I move to approve the consent agenda, A through G as written.
Do we have a second? Second from Kathleen, so there's a motion on the table from Victoria to approve the consent agenda as written with a second from Kathleen. Any further discussion? Eric.
The resolution for, I might, I might not, I might have had to come up with this before, but A, right there, I had a question in terms of the sobering center. Is that something that, that $60,000 that we had obligated to, to do, can that $60,000 go towards that grant for, for, for the sobering center? That's my question.
Oh, you're talking about the additional $60,000 that came out of the lawsuit?
Came out of the lawsuit, yes.
So that would be a question more or less for Stephanie. So the question is, is the, the additional stringent, or the additional $60,000 ask that was to be put back in? Eric's question is, can that be?
Does that count?
To the sobering center?
No, we would have to issue a separate grant was the agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Indra?
Yes, so we just heard that we have some drunken and drugged out people on the street. Are they not being brought to the sobering center? So maybe Chief could answer how?
So we're, we're still on the consent agenda? We could bring that up in, I mean, if?
Well, it's part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
The sobering center.
I guess that's a, that's a stretch, but go, that's fine.
A stretch? I'm, I'm asking, can you speak to how often the sobering center is used and how valuable it is to our community, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor. And I wouldn't have characterized what's going on in our parks in the same fashion. And I do appreciate what community members are doing. I can tell you that our officers are in the parks every single day at nighttime, and they're asking people to move along, and if they don't, they are ticketed and they're, some are trespassed, et cetera. We take people to the sobering center daily. I think the average is two to three per day. I want to say the numbers last year were about 400 people that we took to sobering. That's a combination of Grants Pass PD, which takes the majority, state police, sheriff's department. But there's also a lot of self admits that are really high numbers that also take themselves to the sobering center for services. So the sobering center is a great value to this community, and for $130,000 a year, it's a bargain, in my opinion, and that number hasn't gone up in several years. And we use the heck out of them here at the PD. To give us the availability to remove somebody from the street and safely put them into a different facility and also keep them out of the criminal justice system is a win-win because we take enough people into the jail on other reasons. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, and I took a tour of it, I don't know, a year ago, but there are six rooms or, do you, do you remember?
There, I thought there might have been 10.
10, yeah.
I don't go to the sobering center very often. There's quite a few. I could be wrong with the number. But we utilize the sobering center for a variety of things and also as a reminder, the sobering center is the hub for our deflection program. So we deflect people from arrest that are addicted to substances into deflection and treatment.
Thank you.
Victoria, you have a question?
So you were saying that, as Stephanie were talking about, it would need to be a new grant? Well, could, I was just thinking, couldn't that new grant be written for the sobering center? Or maybe I just wasn't understanding your no, but?
It would be something we would have to do in the future. It couldn't be used for this particular funding.
That, that grant can't be used for this. Okay, just, I'm making sure. Thanks.
Any further discussion in regards to the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda with a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll go into a vote. Indra?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel? Victoria?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda passes as written. Thank you. Matters for mayor, council, and staff? Any questions or comments? Counsel? Kathleen?
I think it was a really valid point that the public brought up about managing these resting sites. What, what is, what can be done there as far as managing them a little bit better?
So when you're looking at managing sites, there are different options that we can do. If you want to move towards more of a managed facility, this is, they're relatively unmanaged resting sites, and that's how they originally established, is just a resting site. And they're temporary in nature.
Right.
If you're wanting to move into options for managing them more and their use, we can have those discussions, but you also have to recognize that if we, whatever services that we increase or provide from a management perspective, we will need to maintain those throughout the, the use of, of wherever, whether they're here or you move them to another site.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me. Could that, that $60,000 be used with a nonprofit to help with that?
Potentially. The, the way that it was written was that it would need to go to a nonprofit for the provision of services. I believe it might have something to do with capital expenses, so it would be the facilitation and more, less the service itself and more the, what it would take to be able to provide it, but it might be something we could look into.
Okay. Well, that's good.
I had Indra and then Joel.
Yes, I have a couple. Whoops, a couple things. First, I'd like to, he's gone, but thank Jordan for applying and congratulate him on his new position. Also, someone mentioned the letter that City Manager Aaron wrote in support of LC2. So I just wanted, in a little bit of defense for him, that our mayor, Sheriff, also wrote a letter of support on behalf of the city back in April of this year for TRIP 2025, which was the precursor for LC2, which was even worse on taxes and things. So I think, I'm glad we're going to be talking about that because I think possibly it was assumed that because Mayor Sheriff did that, that that was okay to do. And I'm glad we're going to be talking about that because that's an important thing. The banking, so I guess I'd like to ask, is that true? I mean, is it true that the Riverside Park, that whoever sponsored, they can sponsor for the whole park and they are in charge of all of the events? Is that true?
So we can give you more, there's a, there's a council memo that was issued a couple of months ago that kind of gave you some background on the Riverside stage sponsorship. So I would, I would point you to that memo for a little bit of background. The decision related to funders is 100% an Evergreen decision. That's not a City of Grants Pass decision in terms of who funds what. Just to be clear, you know, that, my understanding is that when Evergreen submitted to sponsor the band shell, that their statement as a, their policy as a, as a financial institution is to not allow other financial institutions within the park. So it's, in a sense, it's kind of flipped. So I, I don't know all the details. We'd have to have someone from Evergreen, in my opinion, come and explain their position to you. But it's certainly not a City of Grants Pass policy or decision on who funds or sponsors what kinds of events.
So whoever sponsors the bandstand controls all the activities in the park? I guess I'm not really clear on that.
I, I'm not either. I, I did not understand that.
Okay. All right. I, I don't know if that's something we need to talk about or not, so I'll check out that memo and get back. Thank you.
So, and I can, I can verify that, I've done many, many school events that have been sponsored by Evergreen Bank, and they do have a strict policy that if they donate to a school organization, like they're funding swim or something, that no other bank can, they don't, they don't do, basically their policy is they don't compete against other banks when it comes to funding. And that is their internal policy.
So they've decided since someone else is sponsoring the bandstand, they are not going to sponsor anything, nothing to do with the city saying you can't? Okay, thank you.
I think that's their policy.
Okay.
Any further, oh, Joel, sorry.
I, I was just going to encourage Aaron, I'm sure he already, already has it on his to-do list, to do some public involvement with the car folks to understand what's going on. And if you need some help and I'm available, I'll be happy to go with you.
Yeah, no problem. In the past, the city has been very supportive. I have met with the car club. I met with four members, two board members and two general members. And just to confirm that the parks are available, and they currently have a contract or an agreement with the fairgrounds for 26, but at their next meeting, my understanding is they're going to have a vote and discuss whether to move that to the city parks. I'd be more than happy to submit a letter of support for them moving into the parks. I, in my meeting with them, I told them that we'd be very supportive. They may come to you for a sponsorship to waive park fees, which would be maybe around $450 for them to be there. And I'm guessing council would definitely entertain that. But we are in support and we provided an opportunity for them. They were interested in maybe to, having the park for two days, and we said that wouldn't be a problem. And, and there was no obstacle from a city perspective for them coming to Riverside Park.
Yeah, it just seemed like they invited us to go on September 21st at 4:00 PM to the Grange. And I'll, I'll just coordinate with you.
Yeah, because I could definitely be there for that also, so.
Yeah, I would coordinate with Brian. I started the conversation with, with the vice president and the president many, many months ago because I was begging him to come back. And there is, from my understanding, there is a few members that are still reluctant. And so that, if you, if anyone was able to show up for support in that meeting, that probably would be helpful. But yeah, my, my only thing is, is like, I just want as many things to come back to Riverside as possible, so. Any other comments, questions? Victoria and then Indra?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about Valerie, the ice cream lady. I thought we were going to get some, maybe we got, is there a memo that I missed on that? So I apologize if I did. But if you could give us any update about that?
It's on the back of the agenda setting.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the back. We just haven't gone to the memo yet. But yes, we are planning on providing you with that information.
Thank you.
Indra?
I just wanted to voice my support for the park, Riverside Park for Back to the 50s. And then I forgot the ice cream. So it's just the parks, like she's able to go through neighborhoods, correct? Is that?
Yeah, she has a business license with the city.
Yep.
She, she does have the ability to do that. What they're looking for is, is a bigger policy discussion than just ice cream sales in the park, but it's commercial use in the parks. They're public, they're public places. They're made for the public. And so it's really a true policy decision on whether or not public infrastructure can be and should be utilized for private gain, and is that something that council wants to consider and at what level? And so that's sort of where the memo is going to sort of go and let you determine whether or not you want to have a workshop or move it forward to a council action item for consideration.
Right. I understand that. I just wanted to, individually, we haven't cut off her business. Like she's still free to go sell ice cream.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, she was in my neighborhood just two days ago. I was going out the car and she was like, "Do you want ice cream?" I'm like, "No, I'm just getting in my car." Victoria?
Yeah, somebody earlier was talking about city property for being made available. Is there, I just wondered if we could, if that could be, if that could be made available, a list to all applicants? Or I don't, I don't know if that's the way to go, but I, I just thought that was an interesting idea that maybe we hadn't thought of before with the grant. So anything we can do about making that list available, or maybe just if the applicant asks? I don't know. But I thought it was an interesting idea, so it might be a good thing to pursue making that available.
Yeah, the city would be more than willing to answer any questions with regards to property ownership and et cetera. You're probably well aware of the properties that we do own and what would be allowed, that type of use, and, and what zones that would be allowed. It's extremely limited and slim. We have, and that's why you're, we've been here at this temporary site for such a long time, is, is other city property that we own is very limited to, to this type of use.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Eric?
I asked a question before about maybe trading city property for another industrial property that would work, maybe. I don't know, maybe that's, that's an option as well. But yeah, if we can maybe put something together for that or try to figure what that will, what would that entail? And then finally, I think Chief, I don't know if he, if he had an opportunity to, to respond to the public asking about the parks, if that, if, if that's what, if you had anything to add regarding the, the safety in the parks and after-hours camping?
I, just to maybe piggyback on what you said, Counselor, we've been incredibly busy. Grants Pass is about 11 square miles, and we just settled with Disability Rights Oregon, so there was tons of work to do. And our team are exhausted, but given at a full charge and excited and just out there all, all the time, when they can. Our, we do shift notes every single day. It's, it's full of information that is shared with myself and command staff. And our folks are not shy about enforcing the rules, but also being fair and treat people with dignity and respect and affirm in the application of the rules. And I think we've seen a massive change throughout all of our park system. And our, our folks are out there doing everything they possibly can. I would just say to the community, if you see somebody out there that is sleeping overnight, knowing that the rules have changed, just give us a ring and we'll go out there and we'll handle it when we find the time. We do have the authority to immediately remove people, but we have been seeing a lot of compliance. There have been some citations and arrests that have been made in general, but we have been seeing a lot of compliance. We have a wonderful relationship with service providers. In fact, I'm confident we have a meeting tomorrow, a follow-up meeting from a couple of weeks ago. So that partnership will continue. So just if you see something, say something. We'll do our best to get out there, and thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, Chief. It's, I really, as well as everybody else, I'm sure, really appreciate your service as well as the rest of the police department. Thank you so much.
Any other matters for council? Kathleen?
I was curious, that property next to Little Pantry's Administration Building, the old bus depot, who owns that next to it? That is pretty much?
You're talking about where the old Greyhound bus station is there on, by Agnes, the corner there?
Yeah.
That is actually, I, I, the name escapes me, but that's
It's private, private property.
From a planning perspective, it's, it's private and it's gone through a planning perspective. I believe that is scheduled to have RV park put in, put into it.
Oh, that's, okay.
So it's, it's being planned for development already.
Okay.
Anything else? Staff? Thank you. I'll be, Victoria?
I move to adjourn.
All right. We're adjourned then. I'm assuming everybody's going to be on board with that.